Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members. Honorable representatives Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansya, Asistio, Atade, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tunggalaw, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Copilar, Cohuangco Jaime Eduardo Marc, Cohuangco Marc, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Cuarezma, Dogooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, De Faustino Ino, De Faustino Michael Carlos, De Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Parinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Presnedi, Fuente Belia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Marc, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio Dom, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga Ara, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Recto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Ylohyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamarie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulug, Silverio, Singzon Rachel, Singzon Ronald, Singzon Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chei, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves, Tiangko, Teng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Ferte Luis Raymond, Villia Ferte Miguel Luis, Villia Nueva, Villiar, Villia Raza Suarez, Villia Rica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christoffersen, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 229 members responded to the call.
With 229 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that the copies of Journal Number 17 dated September 5, 2023, and Journal Number 18 dated September 6, 2023, were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading of the said journals. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the aforementioned journals. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The reading of the said journals is dispensed with. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 17 dated September 5, 2023, and Journal Number 18 dated September 6, 2023.
There is a motion to approve the said journals. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is carried. Journal Number 17 dated September 5, 2023, and Journal Number 18 dated September 6, 2023 are hereby approved. Majority Leader.
May we acknowledge Mr. Oliver Tarantino, a well-renowned fashion designer who has graced his presence in this august chamber, a guest of our Congresswoman Florida Robes. May we acknowledge Mr. Oliver Tolentino is actually here right now.
To the guest of Representative Florida Rida Robes, Mr. Oliver Tolentino, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as the communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill Number 9035: Establishing a No Homework Policy on Weekends for All Elementary and Junior High Schools in the Country by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 9036: Maintaining and Preserving Filipino Films Creating the Philippine Film Archive by Representative Vargas.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Bill 9038: Modernizing the Philippine Coast Guard by Representatives Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Irwin, Yap Edvik, and Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 9039: Establishing a Tourist Protection and Assistance Council for the Security and Protection of Tourists and Tourist Facilities by Representatives De Faustino Michael Carlos and Tan Watko.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 9040: Creating the Metropolitan Kageyan Diora Development Authority by Representatives Suwan, Unabia, and Emano.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 9041: Providing for a $15,000 Production Subsidy for Farmers and Fisher-Folks affected by increasing cost of farm inputs, rising fuel prices, economic downturn, and calamities amid the COVID-19 pandemic by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 9042: Establishing a National Policy of Free Housing through Alternative Means by Representative Zubiri.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 9043: Amending Republic Akna 8794 imposing a Motor Vehicle Use Charge on Owners of all types of motor vehicles by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Irwin, Yap Edvik, and Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 9044: Mandating the formulation, financing, implementation, monitoring, and evaluation of a comprehensive and multi-year Tatak Pinoy Proud the Filipino Strategy establishing a Tatak Pinoy Council by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Irwin, Yap Edvik, and Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 9046: Making the Appointment of an Agriculturalist mandatory in municipalities where agriculture is a significant industry by Representative Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 9050: Establishing a Framework for a Blue Economy promoting stewardship and sustainable development of coastal and marine ecosystems and resources by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 9051: Creating a Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 9052: Establishing halfway houses for the abused women and children by Representatives Tulfo Irwin, Yap Edvik, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 9053: Providing for a $15,000 Production Subsidy for Farmers and Fisher-Folks affected by increasing cost of farm inputs, rising fuel prices, economic downturn, and calamities amid the COVID-19 pandemic by Representative Duterte.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 9054: Integrating Good Counter and Ethical Standards of Public Officials and Employees in the Basic Education Curriculum by Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 9055: Converting Atulayan Elementary School in Atulayan Sagnay Camarinesur into the Atulayan Sagnay Integrated School by Representative Fuente Belia.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 9056: Granding Filipino Citizenship to Sister Maria Teresa Casali Ravasho by Representative Matibag.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 9057: Prohibiting Usurious Lending to Farmers by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 9058: Establishing a Multi-Species Marine Hatchery in Ponte Vedra, Capys by Representative Castro Jane.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 9059: Providing for a Scholarship to Children and Dependents of Farmers and Fisher-Folks by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 9060: Amending the Charter of the Polytechnic University of the Philippines by Representatives Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Yap Edvik, and Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Nine Zero Six One: Institutionalizing the Public Utility Vehicle Modernization Program by Representative Espares.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Nine Zero Six Two: Rationalizing the Taxes Imposed on Non-Life Insurance Policies by Representatives Lacson Noel and Noel.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill Nine Zero Six Three: Converting the Community College of Ingoog City located in Misamis Oriental into the First Misamis Oriental State College by Representative Unabia.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Numbers Nine Zero Six Six, Nine Zero Six Seven, and Nine Zero Six Eight: Converting Several Roads in Certain Municipalities in the Province of the Vau de Oro into National Roads by Representative Gonzaga.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Nine Zero Six Nine: Amending Section Seventy-seven of the Omnibus Election Code to modify the grounds for substitution of candidates by Representative Gonzaga.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill Nine Zero Seven Zero: Lowering the Cost of Prescription Drugs and Medicines by Representative Gonzaga.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill Nine Zero Seven One: Increasing the Recruitment quota requirement of Female PNP Officers by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill Nine Zero Seven Two: Renaming the Bitlang Integrated School located in Sudlon Cebu City as Sudlon One Integrated High School. Integrated School by Representative Rama.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Nine Zero Seven Three: Providing for the Magna Carta for Public Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Workers by Representative Rodriguez Yolojo.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill Nine Zero Seven Four: Declaring the Sikagon Island in Carles Iloilo as an Ecotourism Zone by Representative Ang.
To the Committee on Tourism.
Resolutions: House Resolution One Two Five Six: Congratulating and Commending the Jesus is Lord Church Worldwide for Forty-five Remarkable Years of Successful Transformational Ministry in Luzon, Visayas, Mindanao, and in More than Seventy Nations Around the World by Representative Hernandez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution One Two Five Seven: Urging the Committee on Human Rights Immediately Conduct an Investigation on the Harassment, Abduction, Surveillance, and Red-Tagging experienced by Sugar Workers in Batangas by Representatives Brosas, Castro, France, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution One Two Six Zero: Extending Heartfelt Congratulations and Highest Commendations to Ernest John E.J. Obiena for Achieving a Historic Victory in the International Stage by Capturing the Silver Medal at the Twenty Twenty-three World Athletics Championships by Representative Rama.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution One Two Six One: Urging the Committee on Health to Conduct an Investigation on the Tripling of Field Health Executives Total Pay in Twenty Twenty-two by Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution One Two Six Two: Urging the CHED to Prohibit All Higher Education Institutions from Allowing, Setting, Institutionalizing, or Imposing the Conduct of Any Student's Activity, Curricular or Otherwise, Within or Outside School Campuses on Any Sunday and to Set Apart Said Day of the Week as Family Day by Representative Malapitan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution One Two Six Three: Stronger Urging the DOH to Immediately Review Its Administrative Orders Twenty Ten dash zero zero three two and Twenty Twelve dash zero 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 seven in Consonance with the Implementation of the Expanded Senior Citizens Act of Twenty Ten and to Discontinue the Implementation of the Purchased Lip Booklet as a Mandatory Requirement in the Purchase of Medicines and Goods by Representatives Gomart.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution One Two Six Five: Convaying Heartfelt Condolences of the House of Representatives on the Passing of Award-Winning Broadcaster and Media Personality Mike Enriquez by Representative Barba.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution One Two Six Six: Commending and Congratulating E.J. Obiena for Winning a Gold Medal at the Internationale Skr- Stadion Fest in Germany by Representative Barba.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution One Two Six Seven: Congratulating and Commending Danry Seth Romualdes for Winning a Bronze Medal in the Seventh Eastern Asia Youth Chess Championship held in Hainan, China by Representative Barba.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution One Two Six Eight: Requesting the Committee on Higher and Technical Education to Conduct an Immediate Investigation on the Fraudulent Circumstances Addended to the Selection and Appointment of the President of the Southern Philippines Agribusiness and Marine and Aquatic School of Technology Conducted Last August Twenty-two, twenty twenty-three by Representative Bautista.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications: Letter dated August seventeen, twenty twenty-three of the National Commission on Muslim Filipinos Secretary submitting to the House a Copy of their FY twenty twenty-four Budget Folio.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated August twenty-three, twenty twenty-three of the DBM Secretary copy furnished the House submitting to the COA OIC Director for Cluster Two Oversight and Public Debt Management Agencies a Copy of their Agency Action Plan and Status of Implementation as of August sixteen, twenty twenty-three on the COA's Audit Observations and Recommendations for the Calendar Year Twenty Twenty-two.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Annual Report Twenty Twenty-two of the National Commission on Muslim Filipinos.
To the Committee on Muslim Affairs.
First One Hundred Days Report, April twenty-four to August one, twenty twenty-three of the Chief Philippine National Police.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
Twenty Twenty-two Annual Report of the National Commission on Indigenous Peoples.
To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples.
Letter of the PNP Acting Director for Comptrollership for Warning to the House a Copy of their Agency Action Plan and Status of Implementation as of July thirty-one, twenty twenty-three on the COA Audit Observations and Recommendations for the Calendar Year Twenty Twenty-two of the PNP.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Report on the Fund Utilization and Status of Program Project Implementation of the Local Government Support Fund of the Municipality of Birak, Province of Catanduanes for the Second Quarter Ending CY twenty twenty-three attested the Municipal Mayor.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Reports: Committee Report Number Seven Four Five and Seven Four Seven committed by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development and House Resolution Numbers One Two Five Eight and One Two Five Nine respectively. Committee Report Number Seven Four Six, Seven Four Eight, and Seven Four Nine submitted by the Committee on Economic Affairs, Trade and Industry, Ways and Means, and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers Nine Zero Six Four, Nine Zero Six Five, and Nine Zero Seven Five respectively. Committee Report Number Seven Five Zero and Seven Five One submitted by the Committee on Climate Change on House Resolution One Two Six Four and House Bill Nine Zero Eight Four respectively.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being Monday, and pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? There being none, the chair declares a privilege hour. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the lady from Bago Generacion Partilis be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The Representative Bernadette B. H. Herrera is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Honorable colleagues and esteemed Diaz, Magadang hapun poas enyong lahat. I rise before this august body today with a heavy heart and deep concern for our beloved nation, Philippines. It is with great urgency that I address the looming power crisis that threatens to cripple our progress and undermine the very foundations of our society. As representatives of the people, we have been entrusted with the responsibility to safeguard their interests and ensure the well-being of our constituents. The power crisis we face is not a mere inconvenience or a passing storm. It is a fundamental threat to the stability and prosperity of our nation. Over the past decade, our country has experienced remarkable economic growth and development. However, the progress has come at a cost. Our energy demands have surged, straining our existing infrastructure and leaving us vulnerable to power shortages. The imbalance between supply and demand has reached critical levels and if left unaddressed, it will plunge our nation into darkness and uncertainty. We now find ourselves in a situation where power shortages and rotational brownouts have become a distressing reality for the citizens in some parts of our country. Businesses there are forced to scale operations, scaled back operations, or incur substantial losses due to disruptions in power supply. Hospitals and medical facilities struggle to provide adequate healthcare services comprising the well-being of our people, compromising the well-being of our people. Students are unable to pursue their studies effectively as blackouts hinder their access to educational resources. Ladies and gentlemen, if left unaddressed, the power crisis next year would be nationwide. It poses a grave threat to our economy and we cannot afford to underestimate the gravity of this situation. Our industries, businesses, and homes rely on a stable and reliable power supply to function effectively. The power crisis has the potential to hamper economic growth, exacerbate unemployment, and widen the gap between the rich and the poor. It threatens the livelihoods of countless Filipinos who depend on the thriving economy to support their families and build a future. Isipin yo ngayon halos online na lahat. Every time a power interruption, napakadaming hanap buhay at empleyado ang nawawalan ang kita. In addition, the power crisis deters foreign investments and undermines the confidence of local businesses. It hampers industrial production, affects livelihood of workers, and leads to unemployment and poverty. Our progress and global competitiveness are at stake if we do not address this issue urgently. As we all know, the lack of power generation capacity is one of the root causes of the power crisis that looms over our nation. But what are we doing? While we recognize the efforts of government in expanding our energy mix and encouraging private sector investments, we cannot ignore the fact that the issuance of permits for power generation projects is plagued with inefficiencies and delays. The impacts of this problem are far-reaching. It discourages potential investors from pursuing energy projects in our country thereby limiting our capacity to generate power and meet the needs of our growing population. It also leads to higher costs of power generation as investors are forced to account for the delays and inefficiencies in their project timelines. So the more na tumatagal ang lahat ng permits na ito, the more na nagmamahal ang presyo ng ating kuryente. The solution to this problem is not a simple one. It requires a multipronged approach that addresses the root cause of this red tape and streamlines the permit issuance process. We must ensure that the relevant government agencies work together in a coordinated and efficient manner leveraging latest technologies and best practice to speed up the permit issuance process. Moreover, while there are efforts to mitigate the imminent power crisis such as the extension of agreement allowing Malampaya Consortium to operate for another fifteen years, we must acknowledge that more needs to be done. Hindi lamang po ito. We cannot afford to be complacent and fall prey to political rhetoric. Instead, we must take immediate and decisive action to address the root causes of this impending disaster. First and foremost, we must invest in our energy infrastructure. Our power generation capacity must be expanded to meet the growing demands of our nation. We must explore all available options, including renewable energy sources to diversify our energy mix and reduce our dependence on fossil fuels. The development of solar, wind, hydro, and geothermal power projects must be accelerated to harness abundant natural resources for our country. By doing so, we can create a more sustainable future for generations to come. It is high time that we prioritize sustainable development and embrace clean and green energy solutions that will secure our future. Additionally, we must enhance our transmission and distribution systems to ensure efficient and reliable delivery of electricity. We cannot afford to have power plants operating at full capacity while communities suffer from frequent blackouts due to inadequate infrastructure. We must invest in modern grid technologies, smart meters, and energy storage systems to optimize our energy distribution and minimize losses. We must likewise modernize our existing power plants and ensure their efficient operation. Outdated and inefficient facilities lead to lower generation outputs and higher energy costs. By upgrading and optimizing our power generation infrastructure, we can maximize output, reduce maintenance expenses, and provide a more reliable power supply to our citizens. We must also promote private sector investments in power generation. Encouraging competition and creating a favorable business environment will attract local and foreign investors, spurring innovation and driving down electricity prices. We must streamline the regulatory processes and provide incentives to facilitate the entry of new players in the energy sector. By doing so, we can foster a vibrant and competitive market that will benefit consumers and ensure a more secure power supply. Furthermore, it is imperative for us to create an environment that fosters transparency and accountability in the permit issuance process. This means eliminating the unnecessary bureaucratic steps, reducing the number of documents required, and ensuring the issuance of permits is based on merit and compliance with environmental and safety regulations. At hindi palakasan. It is unacceptable that it takes up to five years, five years, to obtain the necessary permits to build a power plant in our country. How can we invite investors in this way? The bureaucratic hurdles, the long processing times, and the lack of coordination among government agencies all contribute to this problem. This red tape hampers the growth of our energy sector, stifles private sector investments, and delays the delivery of much-needed power to our citizens. It is high time that we empower the private sector by creating a conducive business environment that encourages investment and innovation in the energy sector. This means providing incentives to investors, simplifying regulatory processes, and ensuring that the government agencies are responsive and efficient in their dealings with the private sector. Lastly, Mr. Speaker, here at the House of Representatives, we must strengthen the regulation and oversight of the energy sector. We need transparent and accountable governance to ensure fair competition, prevent abuse of market power, and encourage private sector investment. A robust regulatory framework will foster an environment conducive to innovation, attract new players, and create a vibrant and competitive energy that benefits all Filipinos. In closing, Mr. Speaker, I implore each and every one of you to recognize the urgency of the situation we face. Siguro nga po tayo dito sa kongreso, hindi natin nararamdaman ng brownouts. Sa mga comfort ng ating mga tahanan, marahil may mga generators kayo. Pero ito po ay problema ang kailangan bigyan ng pansin nating mga mambabatas. The power crisis is not a problem that can be swept under the rug or solved with quick fixes. It requires our collective determination and wisdom and action. Let us rise above partisan politics and unite in our commitment to secure a brighter and more prosperous future for our nation. Together, we can overcome this challenge and lay the foundation for an energy-secure Philippines, a nation where power shortages are a thing of the past. Philippines, a nation where power shortages are a thing of the past. Gusto pa ba natin magkaroon ng maraming brownouts sa ating bansa? Wala pong mambabatas dito ang gusto nun. Where sustainable development flourishes, yun po ang ating gusto natin. A nation where power shortages are a thing of the past, where sustainable development flourishes, and where every Filipino has access to reliable and affordable electricity. My fellow colleagues in government, my fellow legislators, let us do something about this and together let us empower lives. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and may God bless the Philippines.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpreters listed, I now move that we recognize the gentleman and we refer the speech of the Honorable Herrera to the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Representative BH Herrera is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the gentleman from the 4th District of Pangasinan, Honorable Christopher de Venesia. He will avail of his privilege hour.
The gentleman from the 4th District of Pangasinan, Representative Christopher de Venesia is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, masantos yaagad sa kayo namin. Greetings and creativity, and happy Philippine Creative Industries Month to all of you. First off, may I once again applaud Bataan 3rd District Representative Gila Garcia for showcasing the local talent of Dinalupihan Bataan, the Jose de Piro Kabataan Orchestra, which played the Lupang Hinirang and Doxology and regaled House members with timeless pieces at the Plenary Hall last September 4. Thank you Kong Gila, Kong Abet, Kong Jet for bringing these talented youths and stakeholders in the performing arts sector to the halls of Congress. With them truly hashtag the future is creative. May I also commend the Association of Women Legislators Foundations Incorporated, led by Chairperson Yada Marie Romualdes and President Lina Bell Ruth Villarica, for the upcoming art exhibit Sining sa Kungreso, an art exhibit of masters, modern masters, and contemporary Filipino artists, which will be on view from September 18 to 28. This event chaired by Congresswomen Josie Limkay Chong and Stella Kimbo is a partnership with Mira Art Gallery and Project Hul Mahan, where part of the proceeds will be devoted to charitable projects, including the construction of a structure at the National Center for Mental Health in support of the Philippine Mental Health Act. The exhibit also supports the celebration of the Philippine Creative Industries Month as visual arts is one of the prestigious domains in the creative economy framework. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I stand before you today to join all of you to celebrate the vibrant and dynamic realm of human expression, the Philippine Creative Industries. Following the enactment into law of Philippine Creative Industries Development Act, or RA 11904, every September has been designated as the Philippine Creative Industries Month, or PISIM. September also happens to be Philippine Film Industry Month, so we also join the film community in celebrating this very prestigious sector in our creative economy. It is thus with great joy that we kicked off the PISIM last September 3 at the Metropolitan Theater to underscore the immense role of the said industries in economic growth and nation-building. PISIM also serves as an avenue to promote the creative output of the sector, the goods, the services, the activities, the events that are all being churned out from the creative space. Among the notable events being celebrated this month are the Fiesta Kucha, which is inspired by the combination of the Filipino tradition of fiestas and the Japanese storytelling style coined as Petchakucha. This event serves as a platform for the celebration, promotion, and enrichment of the diversity of talent and creativity in the various regions of the country through exhibitions, performances, competitions, and workshops. Specifically, the regional legs of the Fiesta Kucha will be celebrated in the following provinces: Leyte, the home province of our beloved Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes and Tinoog Representative Yeda Romualdes; and of course, thank you to Congresswoman Ana Veloso Tuazon for the invitation to speak at their launch; of course, just last Friday, Cebu, our UNESCO Creative City of Design, which was successfully launched in front of our creative stakeholders from the region; Davau, the home province of our beloved Vice President Inday Sarado Duterte; and of course, Baguio, our UNESCO Creative City for craft and folk art. In our very own province, we formally opened the Banag Provincial Museum in Lingayan through the staunch initiative of Governor Monmon Giko III. And so I celebrate along with my kabalayan and welcome this new storied institution to our cultural landscape as it not only preserves our province's heritage and celebrates our prestigious anak banwa, but it also emphasizes museums as cultural sites that can generate revenue and provide livelihood to our creative workers as part of the creative economy framework. Number two, Lunzod Lunzad, a call for creative proposals towards building creative cities, a project that encourages the cities to submit programs, projects, and activities, or PPAs, that support creative and innovative initiatives and promote socioeconomic development through local creative talents and assets. From these submissions, the DTI shall carefully select PPAs that will receive funding and technical support for as much as 3 million pesos. We encourage all our local chief executives, whether mayors of cities or mayors of municipalities, to apply to this competitive grant. Number three, the International Design Conference organized by the Design Center of the Philippines, which seeks to embark on a design revolution where visionary speakers and cutting-edge insights will reshape approach to design leadership. Number four, Taglay Pinoy, a program in partnership with the DTI Sitem and the Regional Operations Group through the initiative of former Speaker and Congressman Lord Alan Velasco, where select MSMEs will receive content creation grants to upscale their businesses and pivot them to the e-commerce and online space. Number five, Young Content Creators Challenge, an initiative of Senator Aimi Marcos, which celebrates and showcases creative Filipino talents in music, film, animation, graphic novels, theater plays, and game development. For other events that are being celebrated this month, and there are more than 100, I believe, you may visit the Creative Industry Month's website, www.pcim2023.com. To keep you up to speed, may I invite all of you to watch the audiovisual presentation prepared by the Department of Trade and Industry, which was shown during the well-attended launch of Creative Industry Month again last September 3.
The creativity of the Filipino is truly world-class. Sila na nagbibigay ng kaluluwa at pagkakilala sa ating pagkapilipino. Protektahan natin sila.
In pursuit of protecting, empowering, and progressing the Philippine creative industries, the national government has institutionalized its support for the vast pool of Filipino creatives through the legislation of Republic Act #11904, known as the Philippine Creative Industries Development Act, which lapsed into law on July 28, 2022.
It provides an institutional legal definition as to what the creative industries are to be able to prioritize what are the programs that would be necessary to be able to scale and grow each of these industries.
This is really a partnership between public and private entities.
We are building a creative learning academy that will provide trainings, business development, innovation, and entrepreneurship courses, competencies, and skills necessary, especially with the entry of new technologies and immersive technologies.
Recognizing the great potential and opportunities in creative industries, the law likewise recognizes its valuable contributions to the country's economic landscape and to the global creative space.
These industries intertwine artistry with commerce, producing a wide array of creative goods, services, and experiences that contribute to cultural enrichment and economic growth.
Finally, there's a law and an organization that creates this that will now provide direction, focus, and synergy among all the different industry players and sectors and really focus on the Filipino talent.
Through the creation of the Philippine Creative Industries Development Council, or PCIDC, the nation capitalizes on the Philippines' abundance of creative and talented human resource.
The creative industries of our country are more than just the products that we produce, but more importantly, defined by the people that make them.
The PCIDC spearheads the development and promotion of the creative industries of the country.
The Creative Industries Council could really concentrate on the production aspect of the arts, and with that, they would need to really work with the supply aspect.
Given the cultural, social, and economic value of this sector, the further development of our creative industries actually falls within the development agenda currently being pursued by the NADAP Board, Social and Productive Committee.
We can create enabling environments and provide them with more resources and opportunities to nurture and develop talents.
Comprised of 10 government agencies and nine private sector representatives, for each domain identified, the PCIDC carries out concrete programs that shall enrich and empower every creative domain and all its stakeholders.
With the passage of the PISIM law, we will be working together with the other government agencies, and that would give us more impetus to make our Filipinos more aware of what intellectual property is.
Through the convergence and collaboration of the stakeholders and players of the Philippine creative industries, the continuous and successful implementation of the long-term and progressive plans for the development and promotion of the country's creative ecosystems shall lead the nation towards becoming a leading creative hub in both regional and global spheres.
These creative industries also stimulate job creation, entrepreneurship, and socioeconomic development.
I can see a potential fusion of innovation and creativity that can further improve the Philippines' global competitiveness and presence.
Celebrating the creative excellence of the Malika Ingpinoy, the Philippine Creative Industries Development Act shall continue in solidifying the foundation, strengthening the pillars of the country's creative industries, which will advance the overall sustainable, inclusive, and progressive development of our nation, believing that the future is always creative.
Make certain that we revive once again what is fundamentally Filipino, our native creativity.
I fully support and recognize the creative industry, not only as an active contributor to economic growth, but also as a driving force that gives soul to the Filipino identity.
Thank you. As you may all know, the Philippine creative industries have employed 6.98 million Filipinos in 2022, higher by 10.5% from 6.32 million in 2021. The said industries encompass a vast spectrum of fields: audiovisual media, digital interactive media, creative services, design, publishing and print media, performing arts, visual arts, traditional cultural expressions, and cultural sites. In this light, it is fitting and proper that we recognize and appreciate the enormous contribution of creators, creative firms, artists, artisans, creators' workers, indigenous cultural communities, content providers, and stakeholders in the creative industries. Given that the Philippines is home to millions of skilled, creative, and talented individuals, its creative economy has the potential to generate more income and jobs through establishing linkages within creative sectors to produce original Filipino content and intellectual properties. We laud President Bongbong Marcos Jr. for his steadfast support to the promotion and development of the creative industries as a driver of economic growth and our post-pandemic recovery, and for acknowledging the world-class Filipino creativity which he expressed in his first and second State of the Nation adjuties. He stated that "the creative industries, among others, will drive the quality and competitiveness of our workforce in existing markets and in nuance waiting to be explored." In fact, earlier this week, he made mention of supporting creative industries at the ASEAN Summit in Indonesia, and I quote, "Let us bolster support for the increased participation of micro, small, and medium enterprises and startups in the digital and creative economies. Creativity and innovation are the way to the future. Let us strengthen collaboration and align our policies, including establishing a regional scope of the creative economy, closing financial gaps, and managing digital readiness capacities." End quote. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, the creative industries do more than just entertain us. They inspire innovation, they challenge the status quo, and they help shape our future. They are the heartbeat of our society's imagination, and their impact is indeed immeasurable. The creative industries are a wellspring of economic growth. As you may all know, the sector contributed 7.3% to our country's gross domestic product, or 1.6 trillion pesos in 2022, representing an increase of 12.1% from 1.43 trillion in 2021. The creative industries are indeed the fastest-growing sector in the entire world. So much so that the Philippine Development Plan 2023 to 2028 mentioned and discussed the creative industries over 80 times, that's eight zero, 80 times, highlighting their growing contribution to the country's economic development. Creative minds have the remarkable ability to turn ideas into reality, to transform the ordinary into the extraordinary, and to bridge gaps between diverse cultures and perspectives. The power of creativity knows no boundaries. It transcends race, language, creed, politics, and geography. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, the enactment of the Philippine Creative Industries Development Act was only the beginning of our collective quest for a creative future. Indeed, we have made great strides since we first took the reins of championing the sector during the pandemic. Among them is the recent enactment of the Cultural Mapping Law, or RA 11961. Under the law, our creative workers engaged in producing traditional cultural goods and services are now better equipped in their trade through the institutionalization of cultural mapping by all local government units. A wide array of cultural resources will now be readily available to our creators through the Philippine Registry of Heritage, which serves as a repository of all cultural properties of the country deemed locally and nationally significant. The National Registry will likewise guide the government agencies in formulating plans, programs, and policies intended to develop the country's historical and cultural landscape as well as the creative industries. What's more, the National Commission for Culture and Arts, or the NACOM, is What's more, the National Commission for Culture and Arts, or the NCCA, as well as other cultural agencies, will now be empowered to provide technical and financial assistance to LGUs, which will then empower them to better safeguard traditions and assign cultural value to properties that they hold meaningful to their identity. I'm going to go off-script a little bit and just say that there is a 200-million peso appropriation for cultural mapping. I encourage all of you to encourage your LGUs to apply for this cultural mapping grant with the NCCA. The cultural mapping is an important tool that you can use to leverage for socio-economic growth and activities. For example, if your LGU is in the process of creating a festival to celebrate the rich cultural heritage that they have in their locality, you can use the cultural map so that the festival is more culturally rooted. Because for us to be truly global and competitive, we must be hyper-local. We must look inside our culture and our identity. The cultural map can also be leveraged by the academe and the education sector to better facilitate cultural education in our schools. The cultural map can also empower our MSMEs to be able to tailor their goods and services so that they are more culturally rooted and competitive. So again, I encourage all of you that once the IRR for this law is released, to encourage your mayors to apply for this cultural mapping grant with the NCCA so that for the soonest possible time, you can already produce a cultural map for your localities. Another win for the creative industries is the recent enactment of the One Town, One Product Law, or RA 11960. The law institutionalizes the OTOP program that promotes local products and capabilities and capacitates MSMEs through developing indigenous raw materials, utilizing local skills and talents, and featuring local traditions and cultures across the country. It addresses gaps in entrepreneurial skills, market compliance to preserve the OTOP brand as a mark of excellence, and access to local and foreign markets. It tasks the DTI to serve as a lead agency in coming up with a set of criteria for OTOP products that are consistent with cultural values, derive sources from the community, evoke a sense of connection among locals, and exemplify Filipino creativity and innovations, among many others. I am particularly excited about the creation of OTOP hubs in every city and municipality across the country, and of course, OTOP hubs in all of our international and domestic gateways to be able to showcase the products, the output of not just our creative sector, but even our allied sectors in the economy. While we continue to reach milestones, there is more work to be done. It is for this reason that we continue to explore ways and means of bringing to fore and addressing the needs of the creative industries. Of course, these initiatives require resources for which I respectfully and earnestly appeal for a substantial increase in the budget allocation of the creative industries. In fact, in the 2023 GAA, collectively between the allocation of the lower house, and of course, for this, I have to thank the House leadership and Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, and of course, in the Senate, through the interventions of Senator Coco Pimentel and Senator Ime Marcos, we were able to generate a total of 410 million pesos for year one of the implementation of the PISDA. Of course, in this year's NEP, there is a recommendation of 50 million, but this is still a marked difference compared to the 2023 NEP of zero allocation. So again, we enjoin everybody to support the creative sector by supporting the budgetary needs of our creative agencies, most especially with the DTI for the Malikaing Pinoy program. This all ladders up to our 2030 goal of making the Philippines the number-one creative economy in all of ASEAN by the year 2030. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, today I stand before you not only as a staunch advocate, but as someone who believes in the country's power to express creativity as a driving force for change, innovation, and progress. During this Philippine Creative Industries Month celebration, let's honor the artists who paint our world, the musicians who compose the soundtrack of our lives, the filmmakers who transport us to different worlds, the designers who make the mundane wonderful. And I heard earlier that Oliver Tolentino is here as a guest of Congresswoman Rida Robes, so we join Congress in welcoming this amazing stakeholder in the design sector, and of course, all the other creatives for their significant contribution to nation-building. This month is not just a celebration, it is a commemoration of the boundless power of human imagination, innovation, and creativity. Let us embrace this month with open hearts, open minds, and let the creative spirit within each of us flourish. For truly, the future is creative. Again, Happy Philippine Creative Industries Month to all of you. Happy Philippine Film Industry Month to all of you, and please support all of our local films that are showing in cinemas this month and in the coming months. We should be the first ones sa nakapila sa takilya, and let's not wait for it to be available on streaming platforms. Let's go to the cinemas, buy a ticket, and support our films, support our plays, support the output of the creative sector, and of course, mabuhay ang Malikaing Pinoy. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, dear colleagues. Okay, we can maybe cut the video in the interest of time. Thank you once again. Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, what is the pleasure of the gentlewoman?
Mr. Speaker, fellow members of this august body, I rise to support and the second, the pleas of our dear colleague and advocate Representative Christopher Kontoff de Venesia, and to draw special attention on the state of the Philippine creative industry, a special sector which is not only very, very close to my heart, but has been my very own flesh and blood. It has been good to me and to my family, and therefore, it is but proper that I stand to advocate the promotion and protection of the Philippine creative economy. September being the Philippine Creative Industries Month, it is an opportunity for us to emphasize the great contribution of Philippine creative industry not only on moral or cultural grounds, but believe it or not, on Philippine economic progress. It was already mentioned by Kontoff, I would like to reiterate that Philippine Statistics Authority, or PSA, reported that the country's creative economy in 2022 increased by 12.1% or from 1.43 trillion in 2021 to 1.60 trillion pesos in 2022. The PSA also revealed that the creative economy contributed 7.3% langnaman po to our gross domestic product, or GDP. Also, in 2022, 10.5% more Filipinos were gainly employed in the creative industries, or from 6.32 million Filipinos to 6.98 million in 2022. Clearly, therefore, the Philippine creative industry is a fast-growing segment of our economy, and if we use creative economy as a yardstick to our post-pandemic recovery, then we can simply say that we are all on our way. Specifically, I would like to reiterate and our support to the movie-making industry, which is quite sad at this point in time, Mr. Speaker. Sa panahon ngayon, na konti na lamang ang nanonood sa ating mga sinehan dahil sa taas ng presyo rin ng takilya. Marami po sa mga producers natin ang humihinto na at nag-iisip ng maraming beses kung magpo-produce pa ng pelikula. So I would like to express my support to the various bills that are being now presented in the committee of my good friend Kontoff de Venesia. And also, I would like to reiterate also my support to the request of the Philippine movie industry to support the moratorium on not paying amusement taxes for the next two years for local movies, just to give support to our local movie industry. Alam ko po, maraming nanonood ng international films or foreign films, pero naghihingaluna po ngayon ang local film industry. Ayaw namin marinig ang first day, last day na termino. Gusto namin muling mayagpag muli ang film industry sa ating pong industriya, at malaki po ang naitutulong nito sa amin. Sa isang produksyon, hindi lang isang daang empleyado ang pwedeng mabigyan ng trabaho. Higit sa isang daan ang pwede natin mabigyan ng trabaho sa pamamagitan ng pagpo-produce ng mga pelikulang Pilipino. At sana po'y suportahan po natin ang mga House bills na ito na sadyang nagbibigay importansya sa ating, sa ating pelikulang Pilipino. Sinuportahan po natin bilang co-author ang House Bill 1934 at House Bill 1281 na ang layon ay magbigay ng cash and other incentives sa ating mga Malikaing kababayan. Suportado din natin ang pag-amenda ng Anti-Art Forgery Act, or RA 9105. Ito po ang intensyon ng House Bill 1283 authored by Chairperson of the Creative Industries Special Committee, our colleague Ref. Tof, Representative Tof de Venesia, at marami pa hong iba. Muli, I appeal to the members of this Congress to support the Philippine film local industry. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Dagang salamat for your manifestation of support, Congresswoman Lani Revilia.
And thank you also, Kong Lani, a champion of the creative sector.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to move that we recognize the Honorable Gabriel H. Bordado Jr. for his interpretation.
The gentleman, Robrado, Bordado Jr. is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I am just wondering, what is now the status of the Philippine film industry?
Oh, thank you for...
Whereas before, Mr. Speaker, we had the likes of Lino Broca, Ismael Bernal, Celso Ad Castillo, Mike De Leon. We also had the likes of Richard Gomez and Lani Mercado. But at this stage, Mr. Speaker, we are in limbo. I believe my friend here can give some clarificatory statements regarding the status of the Philippine film industry.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and again, thank you to our colleague and friend, Kong Gabby Bordado, for that interpolation and that question. Medyo hirap ngayon ang ating film industry sa bansa. Gaya na na banggit ni Congresswoman Lani Mercado, mas kumokonti na po ang pinoproduce ng mga local films dahil napaka mahal. And ang primary distribution platform or channel nito, which is 'yung mga movie theaters natin, 'yung mga cinemas, ay talagang naapektohan ng pandemic. Halos walang film screenings for about two years, or kung meron man, social distancing, mga three or four seats apart, which defeats the purpose of watching a film with your loved one. Bawal pa kumain sa loob ng sinehan, so walang popcorn, walang drinks. So hindi ka talaga may inganyo manood ng sine. Ngaya na medyo lumuwag-luwag na po ang ating protocols, ay nagbago rin kasi 'yung consuming behavior ng ating mga manonood. Ngayon po, na meron na tayong mga digital or online platforms tulad ng Netflix, or Amazon, or Disney Plus, or kahit 'yung mga local platforms tulad ng TFC or Viva Max, ay hinihintay na lang po ng mga manonood na maging available ang mga pelikula sa mga streaming platform na ito. And truth be told, kung ikaw ay isang producer na magbebenta ng pelikula sa isang streaming platform, ay katiting lang po ang mababawi mo sa iyong total investment. Pangalawa po, ay ang amusement tax na dating 30%, na naiba sa 10% ay napaka malaking hadlang po sa producers natin para magproduce ng local films. Because the 10% amusement tax is collected or levied by LGUs on the gross sales of the film. So meaning to say, hindi pa doon nababawas lahat ng mga expenses. And in the end, talagang it's going to be very challenging for filmmakers to be able to recuperate their investment through box office sales, and the streaming platform's income or revenue is really not enough. Pangatlo po, halos wala pong subsidy ang ating gobyerno sa ating mga locally-produced films. Ang government agency na nagbibigay po ng film subsidies ay ang Film Development Council of the Philippines. At napakaliit po ng budget ng FDCP for film incentives, not just for local producers, but even for foreign producers who will come to the Philippines and to shoot their films, and therefore, generate revenue and provide jobs to our people. In fact, something that was shared to me by the former executive director of the, or chairperson, rather, of the Film Development Council, Lisa Dino Segarra, we apparently missed out on an Avengers franchise being shot here in the Philippines that was going to spend 1 billion pesos in our economy because our film incentive was not competitive enough. Kumbaga, hindi lamang locations ang hinahanap ng mga producers, hinahanap rin nila 'yung rebates. And because 'yung mga karatig bansa natin sa Pilipinas ay nagbibigay ng mas competitive na incentibo, gaya ng Thailand, or ng Indonesia, or Vietnam, mas pinipili na lang ng producers na magshoot doon kesa dito sa Pilipinas. So again, we miss out on all of these opportunities. And that is why with Deputy Speaker Duke Frasco there in the rostrum, I want to thank our Department of Tourism Secretary Christina Frasco for making film tourism one of her priorities under her leadership, which she presented in last year's budget season and is now starting to materialize through a project management office. Because it was found through global studies and data that for every peso of film incentive that you appropriate, the ROI to our economy is 9 pesos. Meaning, kung maglaan po tayo ng 100 million na pondo for film incentives, ang balik po sa ating ekonomiya ay 900 million pesos. So talagang napaka importanteng tool ang film incentive para matulungan ang ating mga local creators at filmmakers, at sana po ay ito ay mas masuportahan pa ng kongreso at ng ating mga economic managers. Of course, film literacy is also very important, and that is why we advocate for the teaching of film in our schools because eventually, it's the learners who will grow up to be the consumers of creative output coming from the film sector. But this is on the business side. We're not even talking about the labor side. And that is why we continuously advocate for the enactment of the Eddie Garcia bill because kailangan rin po natin protektahan ang welfare ng ating mga workers sa industriya ng paggawa ng pelikula. Kailangan ma-regulate po ang working hours. Kailangan po mabigyan ng mga binipisyo ang ating mga film workers dahil sila po ay freelancers or independent contractors na kung tawagin, and they don't enjoy employer-employee relationships. Kailangan po meron tayong intellectual property remuneration sa ating mga workers para 'yung mga pelikula nila ipapalabas ulit in the future, sana meron po silang share dun sa magiging kita. And of course, kailangan rin po natin ang Industry Tripartite Council para sa workers in the entertainment sector, para meron pong avenue or platform para mag-usap ang mga producers at ang mga workers sa ating entertainment industry. Thankfully, habang hinihintay po natin na may sabatas ang Eddie Garcia bill, naka-pending po ito sa Senado ngayon, basado na sa atin on third and final reading. And in fact, just last week, ang ating mga batikang aktres na si Isa Calzado at Dolly De Leon ay nagrepresent sa mga manggagawa ng pelikula sa Senado sa hearing ng ating kaibigan na si Senator Jingo Estrada. Habang hinihintay po natin may sabatas ito, meron po tayong salient feature sa Creative Industry Law na kung tawagin ay the Creation of Creative Workers Welfare Standing Committee. So pag nabuo na rin po 'yan, 'yan ay magiging avenue din para mapag-usapan ang labor at kalagayan ng ating mga creative workers sa creative economy. And that is about maybe 6 to 6.5 million Filipinos of the total 7 million Filipino population of the creative economy in the entire Philippines. So actually, marami pa po, Kong Gabby. I can talk on and on and on because we had four hearings, five to six hours each, on the state of the film industry. Kailangan rin po natin ang mga microcinemas at cinematics across the country para mas maging accessible po ang mga pelikula natin sa ating mga youth, sa ating mga general population, sa mga tao, sa barangay, at sa community. Kailangan po natin ang mas marami pang co-productions with other countries. And of course, there's an opportunity for co-production with ASEAN, especially as we move towards regional integration and carve out a creative economy share of ASEAN and the entire global creative economy pie. And of course, more co-productions with countries outside of ASEAN kasi meron po silang kakayahan para suportahan ang ating local creators. And siguro finally, bilang pagtatapos, Mr. Speaker, we cannot have a vibrant creative economy if we do not have a strong intellectual property regime. So kailangan rin po natin i-combat 'yung rampant piracy na nangyayari sa ating bansa ngayon, lalong-lalo na sa film industry. Akalain ninyo, noong 2020 Metro Manila Film Festival, which went fully digital and online because of the pandemic, just when kumikita at bumibili ng tickets ang mga pelikula na talagang maganda ang reviews, 'yung word of mouth ay talagang nagmamature, at 'yung tickets po ay 250 pesos, which you can purchase through Lazada or Shopee, which will direct you to a streaming platform that was managed by Globe, ay pumasok naman po 'yung pirates that were selling links to download the films at 5 pesos, 10 pesos. So ano naman ang laban ng 5 to 10 peso link to download a film, diba? Dun sa 250 pesos na charge para dun sa ticket para manood nung pelikula? So kailangan po i-strengthen natin ang ating intellectual property regime. And sana po, ay ang National Telecommunications Commission or ang NTC, una-una, i-block na nila 'yung access ng Filipinos to the top 50 piracy sites in the country. Because when Indonesia did that, na-reduce ang film piracy nila by 30 to 50% just by blocking access to the top 50 piracy sites. Of course, mas mahirap ma-regulate 'yung mga links na na-share through Telegram, Twitter, and all of these social media platforms. But let's start with that, blocking access to the top 50 piracy sites. And of course, we need to really strengthen the Interagency Council for Combating Piracy. And of course, may role dyan ang Optical Media Board, may role dyan ang Intellectual Property Office of the Philippines, may role dyan ang Film Development Council of the Philippines, may role dyan 'yung ating mga iba't ibang mga platform para mag-self-regulate at maaprehen kaagad ang nag-share ng mga links to our Filipino films. Mr. Speaker, mahabang sagot, pero in short, maraming kailangang gawin and we need a whole-of-nation approach to develop and resuscitate our film industry here in the country.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you to my friend, Congresswoman Toph de Venesia. Sorry for that error. For that comprehensive and compelling narrative. Thank you.
Thank you Congressman Gabby Bordado. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privileged speech and the interpolations from the privileged speech of the Honorable de Venesia be referred to the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The privileged speech, as well as the manifestation and the interpolation, be referred to, hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, I would like to acknowledge the guests of Speaker Ferdinand Romualdes, Majority Leader Manuel Manix Dalipe, Representative Ramon Guico Jr., Representative Jordin Jesus Romaldo, Representative Raúl Boboy Tupas, namely, Major General Steve Crispilio, Major General Romel Roldán, Brigadier General Arvin Lagamon, Brigadier General Dennis Pases, Brigadier General Nasir Lidasan, Captain Peter Jamson de Guzmán, Colonel Benedicto Balaba, Colonel Ramon Flores, Colonel Jose Jesus Luntok, Colonel Lloyd Kabakungan, Colonel Ivan Papera, and Colonel Gregorio Ventura.
To the guests of our Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Romualdes, Majority Leader Dalipe, Congressman Guico, Congressman Romaldo, and Congressman Tupas, to the distinguished officers of the Armed Forces of the Philippines, welcome to the House of Representatives. Dagang salamat sa inyong pagvisit. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, before we continue, I move that we extend the privilege hour to 30.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, we'd like to acknowledge the Honorable Richard Gomez for his privileged speech.
Majority Leader, session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, we'd like to acknowledge the Honorable Richard Gomez for his privileged speech.
The Congressman Richard Gomez is recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sa'ko mga kauban diri sa Kongreso, my distinguished colleagues, Mr. Speaker, maayong hapon sa tanan. Ang akong pangutana, what is the worth of a tree? That is a question that is rarely asked in the course of a cost-benefit analysis when planning our infrastructure programs, including our road widening projects. It is not that our country fails to see the value of trees. In fact, our constitution states in Article 11, Section 16, that the state shall protect and advance the right of the people to a balanced and healthful ecology in accord with the rhythm and harmony of nature. So why do we still see so many trees being cut, especially in the course of road widening programs all over the country? Just in the last three and a half years, in our region, Region 8 alone, a total of 8,443 trees were cut because they were in the way of road widening programs. Now going through the administrative orders and memos of both the DNR and the DPWH, I realize that there is much more that we can do to save more trees just by modernizing and mechanizing our approach to this process called earthballing. As per DNR, earthballing is defined as the process of moving trees by digging out the earth and the roots in a circular shape, leaving most of the root system undisturbed and intact. This slide shows samples of earthballed trees. And let us remember that the ultimate goal of earthballing is to transfer the affected trees to a location that will ensure the survival of the earthballed trees. In the DNR Secretized Memo issued in November of 2009, the cutting of trees is only permitted when earthballing is already deemed impractical. Now upon asking the Region 8 DPWH if they use earthballing machines, and currently in use for road widening projects, the immediate answer was, there was no budget for earthballing machines. Kawawa naman. I also found out that if earthballing was undertaken at present, it would be done manually, which is laborious and an expensive process. I believe that it is because of this complication that tree cutting permits are methodically granted to DPWH for road widening programs. My fellow congressmen and congresswomen, let us bring down the number of trees being cut to the barest minimum. And we can do this by simply mechanizing the process of earthballing trees. Here, in the next slides, we can see the samples of earthballing machines. This slide would show us how a tree is successfully earthballed and replanted. Yan may kita nyo dyan. Yan 'yung mga klase ng earthballing machines na pwedeng gamitin kung kailangan natin ilipat ang mga puno kung meron tayong road widening programs. And it only takes about 30 minutes to ball one tree. All purchases of such machines and equipment, of course, must follow our national laws. Tomorrow, my friends, colleagues, I am filing a bill to mandate the purchase and use of earthballing machines by the DPWH and the DNR in all regions of our country. 17 regions for DPWH and DNR appropriating funds for the purpose of set equipment per region. I am hoping that each and every one of you will support this measure. With such a capital-intensive solution, the knee-jerk question would be, how much does an earthballing machine cost and is it worth the price? Allow me to initially answer this with the same question I asked in the beginning. What is the worth of one tree? This days, our planet has begun to answer that question. Through acts of nature, for every tree sacrificed in the name of economic development, we intensify global warming, increasing the chances of super typhoons, floods, and droughts. How much are all these worth? According to the World Bank, the Philippines is expected to incur, on average, 3.5 billion dollars in asset losses each year from typhoons and earthquakes alone. We need to fully internalize that trees are worth so much more to us alive than dead. So, we need to save as many trees as we can. On the average, a tree absorbs 25 kilos of carbon dioxide every year. Per capita greenhouse gas for Philippines is about 1.2 tons per year. This means that just 48 trees absorb the equivalent of greenhouse gases for one Filipino per year. And trees do more than just absorbing greenhouse gases. Trees give a shade, prevents erosion, prevents flooding, and enhance the beauty of our surroundings. There have been headways in earthballing these past years. In 2002, about 228 trees were earthballed in Cebu City. The earthballing effort to save trees was spent at 17 million. On another front, the LGO Porto Princesa purchased an earthballing machine in 2019 for 16 million pesos. Now, the Balayong trees, which were saved from road widening programs, were successfully replanted in a 7.3 hectare park poised to be another tourist attraction for the city. In Ormo, Walauas Mayor, we earthballed about roughly 300 trees and transferred to different locations inside the city. To be fair, the DPWH does not replace the trees cut at a ratio of 50 newly planted trees in exchange for one. This is well and good, but my colleagues, the challenge with this is time. Yung oras ho. Time is of the essence. We do not have the luxury of 20 to 35 years for a tree to mature. We know that climate change is not coming. Climate change is already here, and we have to act fast. We have to act right now. Daghan kaing salamat, og maayong hapon sa tanan. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader? Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, can I be recognized?
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize Representative Salvador Plato for his interpellation.
Kong Plato is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Will the good gentleman from Lady yield to some preparatory questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to commend our dear colleague Congressman Richard Gomez for this very timely privileged speech. You mentioned that in year 2019, one earthballing machine costs 16 million. Do we have an idea on how much one could cost at present? If each DPWH region will acquire one earthballing machine, how much carbon credit will we benefit from the said purchase?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, thank you so much, Congressman Plato. Uh, thank you so much. A tree-balling machine will vary its cost depending on the size of the machine that will be purchased. Tatlong size po, of course, small, medium, and large. It will vary from 15, 20, and 25 million pesos. It will vary from 15, 20, and 25 million pesos. Now, if we are to supply each and every DPWH regional office and DNR, we have 17 regions all over the country. So times 20 million, yun po ay aabutin ang mga 340 million for the DPWH alone. Kung isasama natin 'yung DNR, eto times 2 po natin, that's about 680 million pesos. Kung bibilangin po natin 680 million, hindi po masyadong malaki yun. Kung yun po ay gagasyo siya ng ating gobyerno. Now, uh, with regards to carbon credits, Mr. Speaker, as far as I know, as far as I'm concerned, we do not have a price on carbon credits in the Philippines. Carbon credits are not the same as greenhouse gas emissions per ton. Carbon credits are traded in carbon markets, which are only in the United States and in Europe. So the best is for us to stick to greenhouse gas emissions saved because it will reflect our country's ability to fulfill our greenhouse gas emission reduction gross per Paris Agreement, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Congressman Gomez. Due to climate change, we have to protect our riverbanks in the whole archipelago. Do you think that the earthballed trees can absorb more carbon dioxide than the newly planted trees as per practice of DPWHs in replacing trees cut during road widening? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, definitely. Mature trees can absorb more carbon dioxide, and it can also produce more oxygen than those newly planted seedlings. Ang ratio po na binibigay ng batas po natin is that for every one cut tree, i-rereplace po ito ng 50 seedlings. Now, 50 seedlings, it will take us 20 to 30 years bago ito magfully mature. Unlike ito, iboball natin ang mga matured trees. Completely cycle na for photosynthesis, for producing oxygen and absorbing carbon dioxide. With regards po sa ang katanungan ninyo, kung ituhu ba ay maganda sa mga riverbanks? Yes, pwede ho. Pero ang mas maganda po na ilagay sa ating mga riverbanks ay kumagtatanim po tayo all over the country ng mga bamboo. Dahil 'yung bamboo po talagang malakas, maghold ng soil, at yun po ay talaga nabubuhay sa tabi ng mga ilog.
Tama yun, Mr. Speaker, Congressman Gomez. Kasi po, ngayon, climate change, siguro napapansin po natin na itong mga tag-ulan, tumabag 'yung dumating. Kung malakas ang ulan, mas malakas po ngayon. Mas malaki ang amount and rainfall na dumating, kung napapansin natin. Siguro sa darating na tagaraw, pagdry, mas drier po siguro because of climate change.
Mr. Speaker, there was a mention of a World Bank study that the country expected to incur 3.5 billion asset losses due to typhoons and earthquakes. Will the process of earthballing trees reduce these losses? Do you have an idea up to how much will the reduction be, if any?
Well, calculating the reduction in asset losses, Mr. Speaker, will be a major effort, and it will have to be initiated by the World Bank, Mr. Speaker. But what we can be sure of is this. The more trees that we cut, the higher the probability for extreme weather like super typhoons, super flooding, super rains, which have caused billions of pesos in losses in infra, agri, and our own homes. Ito po ay nangyayari hindi lang sa Pilipinas. Nangyayari na ho ito all over the world. Napapanood natin sa mga news, sa mga balita. Ang grabe nga, weather disturbance ang nangyayari sa ating kapaligiran. Just recently, in Japan and in Hong Kong, nakita natin kung gaano ka grabe yun, gaano kalakas ang ulan, at 'yung flooding na dinudulot ng climate change. So, tayo ng mga kongresista, hangga't nandito tayo, kailangan magkaisa tayo. Kailangan magtulong-tulong tayo, protektahan ang nature. Unahin na natin na protektahan na bago putulin ang mga puno na nasa kalsada para sa road widening programs, para sa progreso, kailangan malipat natin itong mga puno na ito. Na sa ganun, ay patuloy ang pagprotekta sa ating environment at maprotektahan ito mga matured na mga puno.
Thank you for that very nice explanation. Uh, thank you, Congressman Richard Gomez, for the satisfying answer to my queries. As an advocate of our environment, I convey my full support to the bill mandating the mechanization, mechanizing process of earthballing trees. May I request that I be included as the principal author of the bill to be filed with the honorable gentleman from the Port District of Leyte? Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I will definitely do the request of the good Congressman Plato. And thank you so much because he has a very wide and broad knowledge on what we are talking about. Progress is very important to our country, but also protecting our environment is also very important. Congressman Plato was a member of the DPWH family, so he understands this fully. Maraming salamat po, Congressman Plato. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Congressman Gomez.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of Representative Richard Gomez to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Representative Gomez, as well as the manifestation and interpolation of Kong Plato is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize Representative Rosanna Ria Vergara to avail of the privilege hour.
Congresswoman Rosanna Ria Vergara is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, my fellow colleagues, fellow Filipinos. I stand before you today as we are facing a new battle, the battle for food security. Food security is now a global concern amidst the adverse consequences of climate change on agricultural production, the Russia-Ukraine war, and other looming conflicts in various parts of the world, and the decision of several countries to cut down their agriculture imports to address their own local demand. And while I support Executive Order 39, temporary price ceiling of 41 to 45 pesos per kilo to address the high price of rice, I am wary of the DOF's proposal to reduce the tariff on imported rice to 10% and even zero. This will adversely impact our local rice industry as the tariffs from the imported rice provides the funds to help our rice farmers upgrade their skills, mechanize our farms, provide subsidies for fertilizers, and access to credit. In short, make our farmers more competitive and our country less reliant on imports. Reducing the tariff now may help reduce the price of rice in the short term. However, it will be a burden to our farmers who will be forced to sell their palay at the loss as they enter the second harvest season, the wet season. Reduce our government's revenue from the tariffs, and worst of all, make our country more dependent on imports. Our agricultural sector, especially the rice industry, has been on survival mode in recent years. According to the Philippines Statistics Authority, the average cost of rice production in 2020 was 47,089 pesos per hectare and 11.52 pesos per kilogram. These figures increased to 60,000 pesos per hectare and 16 pesos per kilogram of palay in 2021. The cost of production was so high that our rice farmers are left with nothing as they even have to pay their debts. According to the Federation of Free Farmers, when they have a peak harvest by year-end, they may have an excess production, but there's a lot of rice imports too. Because of the excessive supply, traders will tend to discount farm gate prices. So in the end, after all the hard work in the field, our farmers have nothing but empty pockets. This is presently the sad plight of our rice farmers. However, given the current post-pandemic scenario coupled with rising inflation rates, market behavior will shift towards lower-priced imported alternatives than supporting locally-produced goods. This will render futile all the efforts that the government has exerted to help the agricultural sector. We must be able to address our basic needs through our own domestic production. We must be food self-sufficient. Food security that is reliant on importation places our country in a vulnerable and precarious position when global supply disruptions occur. This cannot be our government's policy when prices of basic goods increase. Similarly, we must look into how lower prices of palay and the lower cost of imported rice also does not necessarily translate into lower retail price of rice. In our experience, it is a profit margin of rice traders that are increasing in its place. Instead, we must address the cost of the high prices, the scrupulous people, traders who are limiting the supply and selling at a high price to increase their profit. The profiteers, smugglers, hoarders must feel the full force of the law. It cannot be emphasized more than right now, self-sufficient food security is not just a matter of national security, but an essential precursor to our nation's overall survival. As legislators, it is our solemn duty to pass laws and support policies that will protect all Filipinos, especially the marginalized. During my recent dialogue with several rice farmers in my district, they shared the sentiment relayed to me by one of their fellow rice farmers, Ginoong Anyano Dela Cruz. Ayon kay Ginoong Dela Cruz, parang ang nagdidikta na talaga ng presyo ng palay sa pakiramdam naming maliliit na magsasaka, trader na. Kung ano na lang ang pairali nilang presyo, parang magkakakuntzaba na sila. Kahit na sino yang dumating, yun ang sinasabing presyo. Wala na kaming magawa kapag sinasabi ng trader na ganun ang kalakaran ng palay. Sa harap ng ganitong sitwasyon, responsibilidad ng ating gobyerno na tulungan ang mga magsasakan ng palay. The life of a typical rice farmer is hard, Mr. Speaker. They usually own less than two hectares of land. These subsistence farmers augment the meager income they make by working as tricycle drivers, construction workers, or any other menial labor they can find. The little they earn from their farms is not even enough to feed their family three meals a day. They don't have any savings and are often indebted to traders who loan them money to buy seeds, fertilizers. The same trader who eventually buys their palay and at the loss. The term isang kahay, isang tuka is the most apt description for the life of the Filipino farmer. The life of a barook or farm laborer is even harder. They don't own any land, they work for farmers, and are often paid in kind, maybe 10 to 15 cavans of palay per season depending on the number of hectares still. These cavans of palay are also sold to the same traders. If we were to look at the supply chain of the rice sector, their barooks would be on the lowest rung, and above them, the farmer. Farmers and barooks have no bargaining power. They are at the mercy of traders, most especially during the wet season as they have no access to post-storage facilities to store their palay, which must be disposed of immediately before the rain comes. While the farmer and the barook are responsible for 85% of the production of our most important staple, and the trader, miller, wholesaler, and retailer, 15%, they who perform the backbreaking labor required of farming earn the least and remain the poorest in our country. During this time of the year, as harvest season begins, I often hear these terms, kawit palakol, nakagalat sa pasimano. It is their way of saying, wala nang makain, hirap na hirap na kami. Our rice farmers have long toiled under the scorching sun and endured countless challenges to provide us with a staple food that graces our tables daily. They are the unsung heroes of our nation, and it is our moral duty to ensure their welfare. Unfortunately, the recent decline in the prices of palay will further push many of them to the brink of poverty and despair. Hence, Mr. Speaker, I humbly call upon our officials in the executive department to reconsider this proposal to lower the rice tariffs, take into further consideration the actual experiences of our local farmers and farmworkers, and build upon the gains of our agricultural sector to further develop domestic palay production and reduce dependence on importation. At the same time, I personally believe that in order to better protect our local farmers from the downside of lowering tariffs on imported rice, counterpart safeguard measures and incentives that will urge both public and private consumers to prioritize buying locally-produced rice could also be provided for. For us in the legislature, perhaps this is also an opportune time to consider a corresponding increase in the budget of the National Food Authority that will allow them to further source our country's buffer stocks from our local farmers at fair and just prices. In this manner, I believe we can further achieve a win-win situation for both farmers and our consumers. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Magandang hapon po.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize Representative Arlene Brosas of Gabriela Pardiles for her interpolation.
Congressman Brosas is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. May I ask a few questions to our distinguished colleague from Nueva Ecija, Congresswoman Ria?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, kita po natin 'yung issue ng bigas ngayon matindi talaga sa ating mga mahamayan, both sa consumers, pati po sa mga producers, sa mga production. Ano, katulad ng sinasabi ng ating distinguished colleague, no? And we think palliative measures lang ang nagagawa ng gobyerno sa kasalukuyan sa pamamagitan ng price ceiling o 'yung price cap na sinasabi. Sang ayon nga sa kaninang sinasabi niya, mas lumala pa nga 'yung kalagayan eh. Kasi kung nagimport ka ng rice, tapos dito sa bansa natin ay pinababa ng 41 pesos, may kita pa rin ang retailer, ang nalugi ay 'yung mga magsasakan natin, no? So, bababa ang presyo ng farm gate, diba, prices? So yun na 'yung iniinda ng mga magsasaka ngayon, kasi magaanihan, diba? So kung magaanihan po, talagang masakit para sa kanila kung mas mababa, 'yung mas mababa 'yung pagbili ng palay sa ngayon. Kung pinipeg natin na 19 pesos lang binibili sa kanila, kung mas bababa pa yun, malala ang magiging kalagayan nila kasi malaki ang production cost sa kasalukuyan, at hindi namang bumababa, even ang fertilizer. So, uh, Mr. Speaker, gusto po nating tanungin 'yung kaugnay naman doon sa paglower ng rice tariff. Kasi ito nga 'yung pinangako po ng Rice Liberalization Law, diba? Ang sabi nila, bababain to 25 pesos ang presyo ng bigas, at makikinabang ang mga magsasakan natin. Saan? Sa pamamagitan ng financial assistance kapag nakukuha 'yung tariffs, nagmumula sa tariffs, 'yung ibibigay na financial assistance sa mga magsasaka. Kung ibababa pa natin ang tariffs, Mr. Speaker, would it mean na hindi na or mas bababa pa 'yung makukuha na financial assistance ng mga magsasaka? So yun po 'yung tanong natin, uh, Mr. Speaker, kaugnay doon sa pagbaba ng tariffs, no?
Maraming salamat, Congresswoman Brosas. Tama po kayo. Sa Rice Tarification Law, pinapatupad sa batas na for the next six years since, from 2019, may 10 billion for mechanization, upscaling of trading, upgrading of their skills, access to credit, fertilizer, and other inputs. At 'yung higit sa 10 billion na makokolekta, will go to the Rice Farmer Financial Assistance Program. Now, that was strengthened last year under Republic Act 11598. So itong taon na ito, may excess collections na above 10 billion na pwede po nating gamitin para tulungan ng mga farmers. Kaya ako po ay tutol dun sa panukala ng Department of Finance na ibaba ang tarifa o gawing zero dahil napakahalaga po nitong 10 billion at 'yung makukuha pang over 10 billion na translates to financial assistance cash po yan. Kaya, tama po kayo. Itong pababa ng mga panukala lang na tatanggalin ang tarifa has already an impact on the farm gate prices. Bago nila pinaptupad 'yung Executive Order 39, maganda na po 'yung bentahan ng palay. Ngayon, because of the price cap, the traders na naman are forcing the price down below 19 pesos, below cost, and the poor farmer has no option but to... nineteen pesos, below cost, and the poor farmer has no option but to take whatever is being offered, kasi wala nga silang pwedeng paglagyan, at pag nabasa, mas mawawala pa. So, they just take the seventeen pesos.
Yes, thank you for clarifying, Mr. Speaker. Totoong merong ten billion, pero in fact, actually, hindi natatanggap ng mga magsasaka. Ngayon nga po, ay meron tayong twelve point nine billion na Rice Farmers Financial Assistance, or RFFA, na mula sa excess tariff collection ng imported na bigas, pero hindi naipamahagi sa mga magsasaka. Actually, this is a crime, kasi hirap na nga 'yung mga magsasaka sa kalagayan nila. Maliit lang na bagay na matutulungan sila sa pamamagitan ng financial assistance, hindi pa maibigay, hindi pa maipamahagi sa mga magsasaka. Sa huli po nating interpolasyon sa DA, kaugnay dyan, hindi pa nila naibibigay ang twelve point nine billion na RFFA. So, 'yung assistance sa mga magsasaka. Tapos ngayon, eto na naman, taas-taas ng presyo ng bigas, hindi na makatuwiran, hindi kaya at hindi abot kaya 'yung presyo ng bigas sa kasalukuyan. Tapos may mga panukala na baka, sa tingin po natin, mas makapagpapalala pa sa sitwasyon nila, kung tatanggalin mo pa 'yung tariff, eh di bukas na bukas na for all 'yung, for all, lalo na sa mga retailers, sa mga importers, parang sila 'yung nakinabang dito sa sobra-sobra na pagbibigay ng gobyerno, pagbibigay, pag-open ng gobyerno sa kanila. So, 'yung imbes na, kung gusto talagang stabilize ng government, 'yung presyo ng bigas, hindi ba dapat ay tulungan 'yung ating mga lokal na magsasaka, at suportahan 'yung mga magsasaka sa mga pangangailangan nila? Hindi lang po, kasi, kaya po namin tinutulan 'yung Rice Liberalization Law, kasi sa tingin po namin, merong ibang pamamaraan na mas magandang makakatulong para sa ating mga magsasaka. And in the long run, katulad po ng sinasabi ng ating distinguished colleague, in the long run, ay food security ang ating direksyon. But with the kind of measures ngayon, palliative, tapos worsening pa, zero tariff pa ang gusto, ano na lang ang aabutin ng ating mga magsasaka, sa ganyan? Actually, 'yung dapat, sa tingin namin, ugatin din doon sa Rice Liberalization Law. Kaya po may mga calls tayo, if you would agree, Mr. Speaker, na i-review, tingnan natin ang mabuti kung ano ang inaabot ng Rice Liberalization Law sa kasalukuyan. Kasi I believe hindi pa rin nagkakaroon ng oversight at anim na taon na, tama ba, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, 'yung ilang taon na, na hindi nakakapagconvin itong oversight ng Rice Liberalization Law?
I'm not familiar, pero ang alam ko, isa sa, hinahanap ko rin sa Department of Agriculture, ay 'yung Philippine Rice Development Plan, na isa yun sa mga dapat nilang inilabas when the law, it's the IRR, before they implemented the ten billion for the next six years. So, yun ay hinihintay pa rin natin, and I will join you, Mr. Speaker, I will join the Honorable Brosas, to find out what's happening to the twelve point nine billion RFFA. I think last year pa po yun, Mr. Speaker, there was a over-collection of over eight billion in 2022. Ngayon po, as we speak, there is six point eight one billion above the ten billion na dapat rin po sa RFFA.
Yes, so, Mr. Speaker, yun 'yung gusto naming sabihin, if possible at malaman natin, we should repeal 'yung mga batas na hindi talaga para sa mga magsasaka. We should junk, halimbawa, ang Rice Liberalization Law, and we should look forward sa iba pang mga batas, halimbawa, Rice Industry Development Act, na po pwede talaga na makapag, makatulong sa ating mga magsasaka. We demand for adequate support to local production, at magveer away tayo sa policy of import liberalization, na nagpapalalapo sa kalagayan ng mga magsasakan natin. We should find fundamental solutions to the chronic crisis ng ating bansa. Isang indicator lang po 'yung bigas eh, iba pa 'yung iba pang mga agricultural products. Sa totoo lang po, napakarami, kasi napaka-masalimuot din ng usapin ng lupa para sa ating mga mamamayan. When in fact, iilan din lang po ang may malalaking parsela ng lupa sa atin, at iilan din lang po 'yung tunay na nakakarating, na assistance para sa ating mga maliliit na magsasaka. At sila pa 'yung bumabalikat nung lahat, hindi naman talaga namekanize, at hangga't walang industrialization na tunay para sa mga magsasaka, and agricultural talaga na pagtulong, hindi talaga yun magaganap. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm also one with our, with our colleague from Nueva Ecija, Congresswoman Ria, for taking up the cudgel always. Kapagka po nagsasalita kayo tungkol, Mr. Speaker, tungkol sa agriculture, lagi po tayong tumatayo kasi alam po natin 'yung halaga, ang importansya ng inyong sinasabi, kaugnay sa pagpapababa ng presyo ng basic, as basic as bigas, at pagtaas ng pagbili ng palay para sa ating mga magsasaka, dahil kapakainabangan po ito ng lahat. Sana po ay magkaroon ng tunay na Philippine Rice, kung Philippine Rice Development Plan, ito na hinahanap natin, hanapin natin, kung kailangan po natin ng oversight na committee meeting dito, pagpag-usapan po natin, kailangan po natin itong solusyonan. Ito po ay para sa ating mga mamamayan, lalong-lalo na sa mga mahihirap nating mamamayan. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, yun lang. Mr. Speaker, thank you very much to our esteemed colleague. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to give a final comment. Unlike Congressman Brosas, I'm not for repealing the Rice Tarification Law. Naintindihan ko po, Mr. Speaker, na isa po itong batas na pinatupad because we're a member of the World Trade Organization. And nung ako po ay sumama at sinuportahan 'yung Rice Tarification Law, ang nakita ko po 'yung aspiration for lower prices of rice with a ten billion fund that would go solely for rice farmers. Sadly, sabi nga ni Kong Brosas, ito ay hindi nangyari, so ang aking stampo ay amendahan natin 'yung batas. Let's give NFA, hindi na lang siya ang hahawak ng buffer stock, she can, the NFA should be run professionally, and it should have enough funds to buy palay of the local farmers at the right price. They shouldn't import, we should support our own local farmers, and we should sell not at a losing rate, but even a subsidized rate, so the marginalized Filipinos always have access to affordable rice. So, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Congressman Brosas.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Ria Vergara in the interpolation of the Honorable Arlene Brosas to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Honorable Vergara and the interpolation of Honorable Brosas is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to acknowledge Representative Ray Reyes of the Partilist Anakalusugan for, to avail of the privilege hour.
Honorable Ray Reyes is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, guests, good afternoon. I come before you to seek your audience's attention to address an urgent health concern of our society. I'm talking about cervical cancer. Cervical cancer is the fourth-leading cancer in women worldwide, the second most common cancer in women of reproductive age. Every year, around six hundred forty thousand women are diagnosed, with nearly three hundred forty-two thousand women losing this battle. It is worth noting that the figure stated five hundred sixty-three thousand diagnoses and three hundred six thousand deaths occur in developing countries. That is eighty-eight percent of diagnosis and ninety percent of deaths, from global statistics, occurring in low and middle-income countries. While cervical cancer is the fourth-leading cancer in women worldwide, it places second here in the Philippines, just behind breast cancer. In 2020 alone, the Catalan Institute of Oncology reported that the Philippines has an annual burden of seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven cervical cancer cases and four thousand fifty-two deaths, which translates to a fifty-one percent mortality rate. Cervical cancer is the sixth-leading cancer in the Philippines, both in terms of frequency and mortality, even though it can only affect women. We all know that there is a multitude of factors that can put a person at risk of cancer. Genetics, lifestyle, and even one socioeconomic status all affect our overall health and our predisposition to develop cancer. In the case of cervical cancer, however, it has been well established that persistent higher-risk human papillomavirus, or HPV infection, is the main cause. To combat the prevalence of this disease, screening procedures and vaccines have been developed, and several studies have proven the use of both, or even just one of the preventive measures effective. A recent study completed in Sweden has all, has been hailed as the key piece of evidence to show the pathway between HPV infection and its eventual development into cervical cancer. The study of nearly one point seven million women has shown a ninety percent reduction in cervical cancer incidence among the vaccinated population. In Australia, researchers have shown that the country's universal HPV vaccination program has led to a massive decline in HPV infection. Moreover, apart from proving to be effective in protecting vaccinated women from HPV infection, the vaccination program protected unvaccinated people through herd immunity. Services done in the years have shown that HPV vaccine acceptability among our countrymen is high. Despite the scant awareness of the vaccine, seventy-five to ninety percent of mothers have said that they would still allow their daughters to receive the vaccine. The small percentage of non-acceptors of the idea cited young age, painful injection, sexual inexperience, and concerns that vaccination could promote unsafe sexual behavior as reasons. In addition to vaccination, cytology-based screenings, which is popularly known as papsmears, have also been proven effective. Mortality from cervical cancer has reduced fivefold over the last fifty years in high-income countries, thanks to effective cytology-based screenings. This, however, has not been replicated in low and middle-income countries, due to costly procedures, complex infrastructure, and lack of human resource requirements that hamper their proper and effective implementation. Global advances innovations in the medical field have made cervical cancer not only treatable, but also preventable. Still, we are losing many mothers, so many daughters, so many women to this disease. This is primarily because the Philippines ranks last on HPV program coverage among low and middle-income countries, despite this fore-said high vaccine acceptability in the population. Only twenty-seven percent of the population has received their first dose, and only nine point eight percent have completed both doses. The number-one hindrance to vaccination, as usual, is always its high cost, making poor Filipino families and those that live below the poverty threshold carry that burden. But vaccination is not the only preventive measure available. What about preventive screening measures, such as pap smear? It would be wrong to say that pap smears aren't available already here in the Philippines. However, although again, we have made some headway towards this end, screening procedures and healthcare services are not readily accessible to a number of our female citizens. Each pap smear screening costs about one hundred to eight hundred pesos, and it has been suggested that this procedure is done every three years. However, as mentioned before, there is a lack not only of healthcare infrastructure, but also the manpower to conduct this. The few places that offer such and are well-staffed to conduct the procedure are centralized in urban areas. A number of our rural areas lack screening facilities, and women in geographically-isolated areas are burdened by the cost of travel, further pushing this potentially life-saving procedure into the realm of inaccessibility and unaffordability. As a consequence of low screening and vaccine inoculation, seventy-five percent of cervical cases are diagnosed at later stages, as women forego screening due to lack of money, misconceptions about the procedure, or absence of any signs of symptoms. If we can recall the numbers I stated before, this figure, seventy-five percent, translates to nearly six thousand cases. Adding to the inaccessibility of preventive measures, Filipinos generally have a fatalistic view of a cancer diagnosis. For a lot, cancer is a very costly death sentence. The fear of imposing financial burdens on their families proves to be a major hindrance in health-seeking behavior. This poor inaccessi, this poor accessibility to screening and healthcare is reflected in the high mortality rate we face. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, karamihan natin dito sa kongreso, maswerte at meron tayong mga pamilya, at maswerte mga pamilya natin, na pag may nararamdaman tayo, napakadali na magpunta sa ospital o clinic. Nakakapili pa nga tayo kung saan tayo pwede magpatingin. Hindi natin kailangan makapagsiksikan sa mga public hospital para sa mas murang gamot o konsultasyon. Kapag may hindi tayo maintindihan, with a touch of a button, medical information is readily available at our fingertips. Ngunit sa karamihan ng ating mga kababayan, mga Pilipino, napakahirap nitong makamit. And there are studies indicating that those of lower socioeconomic standings are vulnerable to cancer, yet we all share something in common. We all have sisters, we all have relatives, friends, loved ones, definitely mothers, who may be at risk to this prevalent disease. Based on the Family Income and Expenditure Survey released last year, thirteen point two percent of Filipino families live below the poverty threshold. That's over fifteen million families, having to live off only around twelve thousand pesos a month. Yes, I said families, and yes, I said per month. Given these numbers, you can understand why women would choose to forego screenings. It is public knowledge that cancer treatments are expensive. So, why spend five hundred pesos to get screened only to risk being told that you have the disease? Why subject your family to financial burdens in the long run, especially if it poses neither pain nor discomfort presently? The passage of our Universal Healthcare Act five years ago was a monumental step in the right direction in relation to Philippines' healthcare system. The enrollment of every Filipino into the National Health Insurance Program, regardless of their capacity to pay for premiums, has given our countrymen a lifeline to hold on to. But its current coverage is not enough, and is not adaptable to the changing times. A whole-of-government approach is the answer to eradicate the prevalence of HPV infection among our countrymen. Steps have been made, of course. HPV vaccination has been included in the National Immunization Program. The DOH, our Department of Health, is coordinating with public schools to vaccinate young schoolgirls, and PhilHealth has recently announced that they will be including cervical cancer screenings in their consulta package. Continuous collaboration between the government, healthcare providers, educators, and the community will be the key to saving the lives of our nation's daughters. We, as legislators, are also in a position to effect change. Several bills have been filed, and several laws have been passed in the hopes of providing additional funding for the implementation of the Universal Healthcare Act, and we have the power to allocate financial resources or programs that will help us reach a cervical cancer-free Philippines. In the meantime, Mr. Speaker, there are programs that need funding that will lead us to our goal. If we're to catch up with our vaccination target a year or two from now, we need to vaccinate about two point one million Filipinas per year. For this, I urge this August chamber to support and approve the restoration of the Department of Health's HPV vaccination program to push this agenda. This amount can hopefully vaccinate one million more grade-four students in public schools, bridging the gap between Filipino families who have less in life and potential and potential life-saving health intervention. Preventing our young children from ever being infected with HPV is essential in this fight. The same Swedish study I mentioned a while ago proved that the pathway between HPV infection and cervical cancer also showed that vaccine efficacy is higher if delivered at an optimum young age. While it has been proven that vaccination and early screening are important in the prevention of cervical cancer, we cannot deny that they are not 100% effective. To do so would be a disservice to those who are fighting or those who have lost their battle despite taking the necessary steps. In 2020, the World Health Organization reported that there were over 153,000 new cancer cases in the Philippines. Additionally, a study done by Philippine Institute for Development Studies estimates that the economic burden of cancer in the Philippines amounts to 35.3 billion pesos annually. Despite this, the DOH Cancer Assistant Fund remains at 1 billion pesos. This amount is supposed to provide a lifeline for cancer patients needing medical assistance, but we know that it is not enough. 1 billion pesos can only serve roughly 6,000 patients. This doesn't even come close to the over 7,000 annual cases of cervical cancer alone. The DOH needs more funding, the DOH needs our help. We need to provide that. At a time of bigger governments and significant annual increases in official spending on other priorities, there is a need to shift the health paradigm more towards disease prevention. With increasing difficulty of finding official resource for health, treatment without prevention has become unsustainable. We still have a long way to go. But the success of cervical cancer eradication, or at least in lessening its incidence, depends on the political will of this government. And I know for a fact in that department, and I know for a fact in this August chamber, we are not lacking in that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, dear colleagues, and a pleasant good afternoon to all.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of Representative Ray T. Reyes to the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Congressman Ray Reyes is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to respectfully request that they acknowledge the presence of the guests of Representative Richard I. Gómez, Mayor Matt Torres of the Municipality of Cananga, and Admin Officer Attorney Lito Solibaga.
To the guests of Representative Richard Gómez, Mayor Matt Torres, and Admin Officer Attorney Lito Solibaga, welcome to the House of Representatives. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raúl Manuel of Kabataan Partilist to avail of the privilege hour.
Representative Raúl Manuel is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ang araw na ito ay petsya ng kapanganakan ng dating diktador na si Ferdinand Marcos Senior. At mas importante, sampung araw mula sa petsya ng kanyang pagdeklara ng martial law noong 1972 sa pamamagitan ng Presidential Proclamation 1081. Ito ay madugong panahon ng kahirapan, paglabag sa karapatan, pagdami ng abuso, at kamatayan para sa maraming tao. Naniniwala ang kabataan na hindi dapat malimot ng ating kolektibong pag-alala na ang panahon na ito ay isang diktadura. Kaya kada taon ay masugi din ang ating panawagan para manumbalik ang pag-aaral ng kasaysayan sa high school at mas paghusain pa ang pagtuturo nito sa elementarya na hindi nakabaluktot ang naratibo. Kaya hindi din pwedeng mapalagpas ng kabataan ang tulak ng Department of Education, ODEP Ed, na sa modules sa kasaysayan na kalagay mula sa pagamit ng phrase na diktadurang Marcos ay gagawin na lamang itong diktadura. Sa ngalan ng hustisya para sa libo-libo niyang biktima, pinakamaliit na sa pwede nating gawin ay kilalanin na walang diktadura kung walang diktador. Ayon sa libroong Dark Legacy: Human Rights Under the Marcos Regime ni Alfred McCoy, isang dalubhasa sa kasaysayang Pilipino, 3,257 ang pinatay, 35,000 ang tinorture, at 70,000 ang ikinulong. 2,520 naman ang naging biktima ng tinatawag na salvage. Ngayon po, nasa 60,000 na biktima ng batas militar ni Marcos Senior, o di kaya ay mga pamilya nila, ang naghanap pareng recognition at reparation. Sampal sa mukha ng mga biktima at sa kanilang mga pamilya kung hindi natin alalahanin ng mabuti at lagit-lagi ang diktadurang Marcos Senior. Silang mga biktima o ang mga mahal nila sa buhay, ang mga buhay na patotoo sa lagim ng diktadurang Marcos Senior. Ang mga biktima ng bagong lipunan ng diktadurang Marcos Senior ay binubura sa ilalim ng bagong Pilipinas ng Marcos Junior Administration. Sa pamamagitan nito, tila muling ipinapa sa buhay pa sa kanila ang pinakamasalimuot na panahon ng buhay nila. Dagdag pa riyan, nakakapangilabot para sa kanila na parang merong remake na mga naranasan nila sa mukha ng bagong mga biktima sa kasalukuyang panahon. Mula sa isang ulat ng Human Rights Organization na Karapatan, and I quote, "As of June 30, 2023, there have been at least 60 victims of extrajudicial killings, or EJKs, in 40 incidents documented nationwide by Karapatan since the Marcos Junior Administration took power. Twenty of the victims are from Negroes and 16 are from Bicol. Two of the three regions singled out for intensified counterinsurgency operations under former President Rodrigo de Tertes Memorandum Order Number 32, which the Marcos Junior Administration continues to enforce. The Marcos Junior regime continues the malicious practice of unjustly jailing activists and other dissenters, slapping them with trumped-up charges in order to justify their prolonged detention. As of June 30, 2023, there are 778 political prisoners in the Philippines. Forty-nine of them were arrested under the Marcos Junior Admin. Meanwhile, one of the most alarming trends under the Marcos Junior regime is the rapid rise in the number of involuntary disappearances. The eight victims of enforced disappearance documented in the first 10 months of the Marcos Junior Admin already constitute 40% of the 20 victims documented throughout former President Rodrigo de Tertes' six-year term. Republic Act Number 10353, or the Anti-Enforced Disappearance Law, remains largely unimplemented and is widely violated, end of quote. Nais ng DEP Ed na makalimutan ang kabataan ng ating kasaysayan para hindi mapansin na unti-unti nang nauulit ang mga pangyayari ng diktadurang Marcos Senior sa ating kasalukuyan. Kung hahayaan po natin itong tuluyan na mangyari, hindi na lamang ito magiging inhustisya para sa mga biktima ng nakaraan. Ito ay magiging buhay na inhustisya laban sa mamamayan ngayon at sa mga susunod na henerasyon. Kaya naman, Mr. Speaker, it is our obligation as public officials to do right by the past, to ensure the welfare of those in the present, and to safeguard the future. Magagawa natin ito kapag tinulak natin ang accurate at responsableng pag-aaral tungkol sa diktadurang Marcos Senior, sa pagkakaloob ng recognition and reparations, both monetary and non-monetary, sa mga biktima at pamilya ng mga biktima, ang paglaban sa korapsyon at hindi tamang paggasta ng pera ng taong bayan at pagpapabuti ng kalagayan ng karapatang pan tao sa ating bansa. Never forget, never again. Yung lamang po, Mr. Speaker, maraming salamat.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Raúl Manuel to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There is no objection. Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Representative Raúl Manuel is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the gentle lady from Gabriela Partilist, the Honorable Arlene Brosas, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Congresswoman Arlene Brosas is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Isang mainit na pagbati sa lahat. Ngayong araw na isibahagi ng Gabriela Women's Party ang ulat mula sa aming pagbisita sa mga apektadong mangingsda ng Mindoro Oil Field. Itong August 26 at 27, nakibahagi ang kinatawan na ito kasama ang mga opisyal at volunteer ng Pamalakaya, Kabataan Partilist, Serve the People Corps sa isang advocacy mission sa Oriental Mindoro upang alamin at kamustahin ang kalagayan ng mga apektadong mangingsda at komunidad sa anim na buwan, ah, anim na buwan matapos ang oil spill magmula noong Marso ngayong taon. Muling paglalayag para sa kabuhayan at kalikasan. Ito ang naging tema ng pinakaunang pagtitipon ng Mindoro Fisher-Folks Community sa unang araw ng aming misyon. Layunin ang forum na ito na maging malayang espasyo para sa mga mangingsda na magbahagi at magtalakay ng kanilang kasalukuyang sitwasyon. Nagpahayag ng kanilang mga mensahe ng pakikiisa ang mga dumalong lingkod bayan kasama na ang kagalang-galang na representante si Honorable Arnan Panaligan ng unang distrito ng Oriental Mindoro at ang kinatawan mula sa upisina ni Honorable Alfonso Umalí Junior ng pangalawang distrito ng Oriental Mindoro. Pinamunuan ang kinatawan na ito ang pagtatalakay tungkol sa Oil Pollution Compensation Act of 2007, or Republic Act Number 9483. Narian rin ang Pamalakaya o ang National Federation of small Fisher-Folk Organizations in the Philippines na nagtalakay ng pambansang sitwasyon ng mga mangingsda. Dagdag pa ay pagbabahagi ng Serve the People Brigade Corps, or STPC, ng kanilang mga community volunteer initiatives at ang pagtatalakay ng iba't ibang opsyon upang igiit at makamit ang mga kompensasyon na nararapat na ibigay sa kanila. Malinaw sa kanilang pagbabahagi na matindi pa rin ang epekto sa kanila ng Mindoro Oil Spill magpahanga ngayon. Ito po ang ilan sa mga ibinahagi ng mga samahan ng mga mangingsda mula sa forum. Lahat ng mangingsda ay naapektuhan ang kanilang kabuhayan. Hindi rin man lang makautang ng at least 1,000 para man lang sa panggas ng mga mangingsda para makalaot. Noong nagkaroon ng oil spill, lumayo ang mga pawikan at isda. Nagkaroon agad ng fishing ban. Natapos na ang fishing ban, pwede na lumoot, pero tanong pa rin ng mga mangingsda paano naman ang mga utang na naiwan. So parang three weeks ago pa lang, no, ah, na lift ang fishing ban. Apektado ang kalusugan ng mamamayan dahil sa napakaliit na kinikita at papasok rin dito ang mental health issues sa hanay ng mga kabataan, nanay, mga nagtitinda. Naimmune na sa amoy ng oil spill, hindi na nila alam kung ano 'yung amoy, pero sila ay laging nahihilo. Kailangang bantayan kung ano ang pangmatagal na epekto ng langis. Susah halos anim na buwan ang nakalipas matapos ma lift ang pinakahuling fishing ban at matindi ang tama nito sa kanilang kabuhayan at nagdulot ng lalong kahirapan. Ang matagal na earning loss ay nakakaapekto sa kalusugan sa komunidad, pagkain sa mesa, edukasyon ng mga kabataan, at pangkalahatang antas ng pamumuhay. May mga nagbahagi rin ng maraming napupwersang ibenta na ang kanilang mga bangka at motor. Ipinapakita nito ang kahalagahan ng pagkakaroon ng agarang aksyon sa usaping hindi pa natatapos ang epekto ng Mindoro Oil Spill. Sa kabila ng Deklarasyon ng Philippine Coast Guard, natapos na ang kanilang gawain. Sa pagtatapos ng programa, nagkaroon ng covenant signing para sa limang puntong pagkakaisa ng mga mangingsdang mindorenyo para sa kompensasyon, kabuhayan, at katarungan. Naglalaman nito ng mga kagyat na panawagan na mga mangingsdang apektado ng anim na buwan na oil spill at mga hakbangin para mas mapangalagaan ang ating kalikasan. Ang mga panawagan na ito ay una, sapat at kagyat na kompensasyon sa mga napinsalang mangingsda; pangalawa, kagyat na 15,000 ayuda para sa mga apektadong mangingsda; pangatlo, alternatibong kabuhayan na lapat sa kondisyon at pangangailangan ng komunidad; pangapat, pagpapanagot sa kapabayaan ng korporasyon at ahensya ng MT Princess; panglima, agarang solusyon sa mga isyong pangkalikasan. Mula rito, naglunsad ng isang community leader's caucus upang pag-usapan naman ang mga dapat agarang gawin upang ipaabot sa mga kinauukulan at mga related o concerned agencies ang mga pinagkaisahang mga panawagan. Sa pangalawang araw ng misyon, bumisita naman kami sa mga lokal na mangingsda at apektadong mamayan sa bayan ng Pola. Umaga pa lang, Mr. Speaker, ay personal ko rin nakita ang mga tarballs na lumalabas mula sa ilalim ng mga buhangin. Ayon sa mga pag-aaral, ang mga tarball ay common by-product ng mga oil spills na may mga pangmatagalang epekto sa marine ecosystem, sa mga recreational activities at turismo sa mga apektadong lugar. Kami ay nakabisita sa isa sa mga apektadong barangay, ang Barangay Misong, kung saan mayroong 200 registered Fisher-Folks. Ayon sa mga naging kwentuhan at talakayan, ibinahagi nila na umabot ng dalawang pulgada ang kapal ng langis sa Barangay Misong. Ang dagat sa kanilang tapat ay halos umitim. Nagsama-sama ang mga mangingsda para maglinis sa may bayin. Una, ang gamit lang nila ay mga kamay para maglinis. Noon ay gumamit na rin sila ng bunot, kaso marami pa rin daw natitirang oil spill sa buhangin. Nagbigay ng food packs at nagbigay rin ng cash assistance mula sa tupad ng doli. Ngunit kulang na kulang pa rin ito at kailangan ng pagtutuloy ng mga pagbibigay ng ayuda dahil sa lumit ang mga nahuhuli nilang isda dahil pa rin sa epekto ng oil spill. Ayon sa kanila, sa lao at maliliit na lang nakukuha, ngayon ay 5 kilograms nahuli na, nahuli ang pinakamataas mula sa dating 25 to 30 kilograms. Dalawang libo ang nauubos agas pag maganda ang dagat. Mayroong sinasabi sa kanilang pagbibigay ng fuel subsidy mula Bifar at PDRRMO, ngunit wala pa rin ito. Ayon naman sa iba, may nagbigay na ng fuel subsidy, ngunit hindi pa nakakakuha lahat. At ang ginagamit ay ATM. Eh, wala ding ATM ang mga mangingsda. Idiniin nila na upang sila ay makarecover, makarecover, kailangan nila ng fuel subsidy. Ilang beses rin nagpunta ang mga galing sa Harbor Star Insurance, ngunit wala pang bagong balita tungkol rito. Mula sa Misong, ang aming misyon ay nagtungo sa barangay maidlang sa Kalapan para sa isang courtesy visit sa kanilang barangay officials. Mula Pola, napansin namin na kami ay sinusundan ng isang sasakyan at dalawang motor na aming naobserbahan hanggang sa nawala na lamang noong kami ay dumating na sa Kalapan. Nananawagan kaming imbestigahan nito, Mr. Speaker. Personal ko rin nakita ang mga sundalo at nakapark na military truck na may label na Civil Military Operations Battalion ng Second Infantry Division ng Philippine Army sa harap ng barangay hall sa maidlang sa Kalapan, Oriental Mindoro. Ayon sa nakarating sa aming ulat noong panahon na ito, may walong police, apat na marine, at apat na sundalo ang namamalagi sa lugar para sa Dumanoy Community Service sa paaralan sa nasabing lugar. Hindi po maiiwasang ito ay magdulot ng pangamba sa naturang lugar. Hindi po maiiwasang ito ay magdulot ng pangamba sa naturang lugar at isa po ito sa pinapanawagan nating imbestigahan at paalisin na ang pagkakampo sa mga sibilyan na upisina tulad ng barangay Hall. Bago matapos ang araw, nagkaroon rin kami ng pagkakataon na makausap at mabahagi kay Mayor Jennifer M. Cruz ang mga pinagkaisahan ng mga mangingsda para sa ayuda at kabuhayan. Patuloy na pinag-aaralan ang iba't ibang mga opsyon upang matiyak ang nararapat na kompensasyon sa lahat ng mga apektado. Matapos ang dalawang araw, malinaw sa kinatawan na ito ang laki ng pangangailangan para sa tuloy-tuloy na ayuda at programang pangkabuhayan, kalusugan, at kalikasan. Ang tubig ay buhay, ang dagat ay buhay sa mga mangingsda. Huwag nating hayaan ang anumang polusyon na makasisira sa mga ito. Nananawagan tayo sa mga kaukulang ahensya para tugunan ang limang panawagan ng mga mangingsdang mindorenyo. Susi sa pagsustinyen ng pagpapaabot ng kalagayan ng mga apektadong mangingsda at komunidad ang kanilang mga karapatan sa pagpapahayag. Pag-oorganisa, asambleya, at iba pang mga batayang karapatan. Batayang karapatan at kalyaan. Dapat respetuhin at itaguyod ang mga karapatan na ito at tiyakin ang kapakanan ng mga mangingsda bilang batayang sektor sa ating lipunan. Tauspusong pasasalamat sa mga lingkod bayan na naging bahagi ng advocacy misyon. Gayun din ang aming pagpupugay sa mga bantay dagat at mangingsdang mindorenyo na patuloy na tumitindig para sa kanilang karapatan. Maraming salamat at hanggang sa muling paglalayag para sa kabuhayan, kalusugan, at kalikasan. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Arlene Brosas to the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Honorable Arlene Brosas is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 8937 under Committee Report 720. And I move that we recognize the Honorable Mikaela Swansing.
Think we need to read the title of the House bill first?
Ah, let me rephrase, Mr. Speaker. I move that we, uh, request the secretary read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8937.
House Bill Number 8937, an act enhancing the fiscal regime for the mining industry and amending for the purpose section 34B and creating new sections 151-A, 151-B, 151-C, and 151-D, all under Republic Act Number 8424, otherwise known as the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is it is in the period of sponsorship and debate.
And we'd like to recognize the sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Mikaela Swansing. I so move.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The sponsor is recognized, Representative Mikaela Swansing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
I move that we recognize for her interpolation the Honorable Brosas, Honorable Speaker.
Representative Brosas is recognized to interpolate the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, um, will the sponsor yield to some questions, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. It would be an honor to receive questions from the Honorable Representative Brosas.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Speaker, ah, nais naming palalimin ang diskusyon dito sa fiscal regime for mining industry bill, no, na House Bill 8937. Pagamat, may positibong indensyon, konti, na itaas ang koleksyon ng gobyerno sa mining companies. Sa tingin namin, sa Gabriela Women's Party, ay kailangang palalimin ang pagsuhay nito sa large-scale mining operations sa bansa. So parang pag sinusukat po namin yun, kung mas malaki naman 'yung i-open niya for large-scale mining industries or extractive mining industry, hindi naman po kami mag-aagree doon. Parang ganon, ano? So, um, Mr. Speaker, para mailatag ang konteksto ng local mining industry, maari bang malaman kung ilang hektarya ang sinasaklaw ngayon ng iba't ibang mining rights at permit na ipinagkaloob ng gobyerno? Yung pinakalatest data?
Apa. Mr. Speaker, sa kasalukuyan pong tala ng Mines and Geosciences Bureau, sa, um, out of the 30 million hectares na land area ng Pilipinas at out of the 9 million hectares na land area considered as having high mineral potential, 768,748 hectares po 'yung kasalukuyang area currently covered by mining tenements as of December 2022. Kung atin pong kukunin 'yung porcentong iyon, 8.5% ng kabuuang land area na considered as having high mineral potential ang kasalukuyang merong mining tenements na umiiral.
So high mineral potential, Mr. Speaker, ano ibig sabihin ng high mineral potential? There are certain areas lang?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, yun po 'yung, um, base po sa Mines and Geosciences Bureau, base po yun doon sa merong, um, commercially viable na mga minerals. Yung meron po siyang, um, quantity sa kasalukuyan na pwede nating sabihin as commercially viable.
Mr. Speaker, kung sinasabi nating commercially viable, ah, may certain areas na tinutukoy. So generally, um, saan po ito?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, pwede po natin siyang ibase doon sa areas with, um, existing mining tenements. Ah, wala po tayong, ah, sa kasalukuyan na, ah, province level data pero pwede ko pong sabihin, kung aling mga dehiyon, 'yung merong malaking, ah, bilang ng mining, approved mining tenements. Ito po, ang pinakamarami ay ang Region 13, ang CAR, Region 3, at Region 4A.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, so yun 'yung pinakahuling datos and it, um, tama ba? 8.5% ang land area?
Um, Mr. Speaker, 8.5% out of the land area considered as having high mineral potential.
Ah, okay.
Pero po, it's, ah, kung pagbabasihan po natin 'yung total land area na Pilipinas, 2% lamang po 'yung kasalukuyang merong mining tenements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, sa Mineral Production Sharing Agreement, ilan po 'yung ano? Ilan po 'yung covered niyan? Di ba may mga categories siya, Mr. Speaker? So I would like to ask kung ilan 'yung sa Mineral Production Sharing Agreement, 'yung sa Financial or Technical Assistance Agreement, FTAA, tapos 'yung Exploration Permit?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, may I clarify the question? Is that the number of projects, um, that's currently under FTAA versus MPSA? Or the, in terms of the area or hectorage?
Area siguro, Mr. Speaker. Ah, area and siguro 'yung bilang din.
Okay.
If it's possible, no, 'yung bilang din ng ilan 'yung MPSA, ilan 'yung FTAA, and ilan 'yung Exploration Permit?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, as per the data of the Mines and Geosciences Bureau as of July 31, 2023, um, currently under the MPSA or the Mineral Production Sharing Agreement, there are currently 296 approved mining tenements, um, covering 543,989 or roughly 544,000 hectares. Under the FTAA or the Financial and Technical Assistance Agreement, there are currently 6 approved mining tenements covering 104,000 hectares. And, um, as mentioned by our distinguished colleague, Mr. Speaker, under Exploration Permit, there are currently 46 approved mining tenements covering an area of 114,000 hectares.
Oh, so, um, Mr. Speaker, tama ba ang pinakamarami ayon sa Exploration Permit? Yung sa Mineral Production Sharing Agreement, ilan siya?
Mr. Speaker, the, uh, total approved mining tenements under the MPSA is 296, covering 544,000. So out of the 3, um, discussed, MPSA, FTAA, and Exploration Permit, uh, majority of it is under the MPSA.
Okay. Yung sa Exploration Permit, I'm sorry, 'yung sa Exploration Permit po, ilan 'yung hectorage niyang cover?
114,000 po, Mr. Speaker. Hectares.
Ah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, saang mga probinsya matatagpuan ang mga malalaking mining operations na ito, Mr. Speaker? Region lang talaga 'yung available, Mr. Speaker, kasi you said kanina Region 13, CAR, Region 3, 4A, tama?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, we can provide the data, um, based on the largest remittance. Um, provinces that have remitted the largest, um, royalties and taxes, so we can base it off there. So the 4 provinces with the highest contribution for, um, mining taxes and royalties are as follows: Dinagat Islands, Surigao del Norte, Surigao del Sur, and Zambalis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, maari din bang malaman sino-sino 'yung malalaking mining companies na nag-ooperate sa bansa ngayon? Tapos, kung anong bansa ang mga ito?
Mr. Speaker, may I clarify? Is this for all types of agreements under FTAA, MPSA, and the like?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
All?
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, ayon po sa datos ng, um, Chamber of Mines, ang malalaki pong mga kompanya na natin dito sa Pilipinas ay ang Felix Mining Corporation, Carmen Copper Corp., Oshana Gold Philippines Inc., Benguet Corporation, Otogon Suyo Resources Inc., Lepanto Construction Mining Co., FCF Minerals, Filminera, TVI Resources, Apex Mining Co. Inc., Greenstone Resources Corp., at Phil Saga Mining Corp.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ang tanong ko kanina ay kung ano din 'yung mga bansa, no, na nag-ooperate dito sa ating bansa na mga mining companies? These are the companies, Mr. Speaker, no?
Mr. Speaker, out of the... 10, 11, 12. Out of the 12 companies, I mentioned a while ago, ah, 10 are local or domestically owned and only 2 are foreign-owned that are under the FTAA regime. That would be the Oshana Gold Philippines Inc. and the FCF Minerals.
Oshana Gold ay from?
Oshana Gold, Mr. Speaker, is from Australia. And FCF Minerals, Mr. Speaker, similarly is from Australia.
So, Mr. Speaker, dalawa lang mula sa ibang bansa ang nag-ooperate na, uh, mining companies here?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is correct. Um, currently, there are only 2 contractors that is under, that are under the FTAA scheme. And, um, the rest of the 83 contractors operating in the country are under the MPSA scheme. So all foreign-owned, um, entities that intend to, uh, do mining operations in the Philippines have to be under the FTAA. And only 2 contractors currently are under that regime.
So, Mr. Speaker, sa MPSA, walang foreign don, FTAA lang ang meron tayo?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is correct. Um, because as per the MPSA, um, it has to be 60% domestically owned um, for you to be able to acquire an MPSA.
Pero, Mr. Speaker, ginong, um, miss sponsor sa ating distinguished colleague, um, 'yung 60%, merong ibang mga bansa dito, halimbawa sa MPSA, kung 40% owned ng iba na mga bansa? Do you have that data, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, um, base po sa tala ng Chamber of Mines, ah, dalawa po sa mga ito ang merong malaking porcento, hindi ba malaking porcento pero merong stake ang, ang foreign company. Ito po ang Filminera at ang Phil Saga, galing po sa bansang Australia.
So Australia lang, Mr. Speaker, kahit doon sa MPSA. So sa FTAA, Australia, tapos sa MPSA?
Meron din po, Mr. Speaker, ang TVI, meron din pong stake, um, galing po sa Canada.
Canada. Mr. Speaker, anong company po ito?
TVI po, Mr. Speaker.
TVI. So Canada and Australia lang ang meron. The rest, wala na?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Um, sa, kalamihan po ng mga kompanya ay Filipino-owned. Um, ito lang po 'yung mga kompanya na meron pong stake ang, um, Australia or Canada or kahit ano bang foreign entities.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, um, magkano ang tinatayang value, no, ng mineral exports ng bansa batay sa pinakahuling datos? Kasi po noong 2019, tinatayang na sa 4.48 billion dollars ito, tama po ba? Pero pre-pandemic kasi ito na date, eh, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, um, sa talapo ng Mines and Geosciences Bureau, ah, 7.53 billion dollars, US dollars, ang mineral exports para po sa taong 2022. Ito po ang, um, composition po nito ay minerals, mineral products, and non-metallic mineral manufacturers.
7.53?
Billion.
Billion.
US dollars po, Mr. Speaker.
So yun ang ine-export, no, sa ibang bansa? That's the total noong lahat?
Apa, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Ah, Mr. Speaker, 'yung, so coming from 4.48, 7.53 ngayon, that is, tungkol 2019 po, pre-pandemic, ano, tumaas siya ng... Malaki? Walaki? Tama?
Opo, Mr. Speaker, tumaas po siya compared po sa 2020.
Ibig sabihin nag-ooperate, Mr. Speaker, nag-ooperate ang mga mining corporations during the pandemic? Ganun 'yung tinaas niya? Kasi even during the pandemic, tumaas din siya?
Opo, Mr. Speaker. Noong 2020, 5.3 billion po. 2021, 6.9 billion. At noong 2022 po ay 7.53 billion. Tuloy-tuloy po 'yung pagtaas.
Oh, anyway, Mr. Speaker, 'yung lahat ng ibang mga, ano, ay nag-stop, pero ito pa lang, mining industry ay nagtuloy-tuloy. At talagang tumaas pa, no? 'Yung export ng US dollars, grabe, ano? Mr. Speaker, magkano naman 'yung total revenues ng gobyerno mula sa mining industry? Kasi ito po ay 'yung tinatayang value, diba? So gusto nating malaman ngayon, magkano 'yung total revenues ng gobyerno mula sa mining industry?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, base po sa pinakabagong tala mula po sa Mines and Geosciences Bureau para po sa taong 2022, ang contribution po ng mining industry sa government revenue ay 38.27 billion pesos.
So 38.27 billion?
Opo.
Ang revenue ng gobyerno mula sa mining industry? Maaari po bang ilahad ng sponsor, magkano 'yung average collection ng BIR, national government agencies, at ng LGUs mula sa mga mining operations sa bansa? This is the total, ano, 38.27? So meron ka po bang breakdown noong mula sa collection ng BIR, NGA's, tapos LGUs?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have that information. Mula po sa taxes remitted to national government agencies, 21.2 billion pesos. Sa excise tax po, 7.7 billion pesos. Royalties from within mineral reservations, 2.5 billion pesos. Fees and charges collected by the MGB, 1.1 billion pesos. And taxes and fees collected by LGUs amount to 5.7 billion pesos.
5.7 lang ang LGUs?
Billion po, opo.
Billion. 'Yung 21.2 billion ay?
Taxes remitted to the national government agencies.
NGA's, okay.
So pumapasok po dito 'yung income tax, 'yung iba-iba pong mga tax na ini-impose po sa mga mining companies.
So, Mr. Speaker, 'yung 7.7, ayun 'yung excise tax?
Opo.
2.5 ang royalty. Mr. Speaker, given the huge amounts of minerals, no, extracted from our lands primarily by foreign mining firms, we are merely earning 38.27. Pero mas mababa pa'to noong panahon ng dati, no? Kasi parang, we are merely earning a little above 20 billion on an average from 2009 to 2017. Ang data po ay based sa National Task Research Center. Ngayon, papasok ang Pano Kalang Fiscal Regime for Mining Industry Bill na supposedly ay magtatama ng effective tax rates sa mining industry? Hindi ba too little, too late na ito? Kumbaga eh, dapat, nakuha na natin, nakobra na natin 'yung supposedly ay nagmula, no? Na revenues na nagmula dito sa mga ano na ito, mining corporations? So ano na ba 'yung mineral? Ano na ba ang status ng mineral reserves ng bansa natin?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, as of now, I can provide the data in terms of the reserve, the resources available for the Philippines for the different minerals. For nickel, we have 1.9 billion metric tons. For gold, 8.9 billion metric tons. For copper, 12.4 billion metric tons. For chromite, 245 million metric tons. And for iron, 5.7 billion metric tons.
So yun ang mineral reserves?
Yun po 'yung inestimate na available resources na meron po tayo ngayon.
Resources?
Opo.
Naavailable ngayon. Ngayon, ah, Mr. Speaker, kung sinasabi na nasa 38.27 billion ang additional revenues na maliliko, no? Sa unang taon ng implementation, ang Pano Kalang batas na ito? Tama po ba? Projected na ito eh? O ito 'yung nakuha natin ng 2022?
Mr. Speaker, 'yung akin pong sinabi kanina na 38 billion, ayun po 'yung nakuha natin noong taong 2022. The projected incremental income from the proposed fiscal mining regime is at 1.93 billion pesos.
Magkano po?
1.93 billion.
1.93 billion? So yun 'yung sa unang taon ng implementasyon?
Tama po, Mr. Speaker.
Ng Pano Kalang batas? Now, can the good sponsor explain how the DOF and the committee came up with this figure? Ano po 'yung pinagbatayan estimates nito? 1.93 billion?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. If I may, I could provide the breakdown of how we derive the incremental revenues as per the different provisions of the bill. So for royalties outside of mineral reservations, we expect to gain 1.9 billion pesos. From royalties from small-scale mining, we expect to gain 21.6 million. From royalties within mineral reservations, we expect a revenue loss of 993 million. And for windfall profit, windfall profit tax, we expect to get an incremental revenue of 984 million pesos. So if we sum that all up, that would add up to 1.93 billion pesos.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, ito ay figure na kinumpute, no? Tama ba ng DOF, particular?
Opo, Mr. Speaker. DOF at BIR po.
DOF at BIR. So, tingin po ng DOF at BIR, ito ay enough? Tama lang ito, Mr. Speaker? Distinguished sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, upon conferring with the DOF, this 1.93 billion which we propose, which we estimate to gain as a result of the proposed measure is an additional revenue on top of the more or less 39 billion pesos that we already collect from the mining industry every year. Another, another gauge that we could also look at is to compare the average effective tax rate that's currently encapsulated in our proposed measure vis a vis the average effective tax rates in other countries or other peer countries. And there we could see that with the proposed measure, we are already at par with comparable countries.
Ah, ako lang, Mr. Speaker, no? Itong, kasi parang piniproposed na natin naaabot ng 39, tama ba? Kasi 'yung 2028 ay, ay 2022 ay 38.27. So kung 1.93 billion 'yung additional, in 30, it will be 39.27 something billion. Mr. Speaker, di ba mababa pa rin ito, no? Napakaliit pa rin ito, Mr. Speaker? 'Yung train, excise tax nga, napasan ng consumers, aabot ng 56.6 billion eh. Eto, etong ano, 30 ang revenue na iaano niya, ay magkano lang? For the first year, 1.93 billion?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, I think if we compare it against the taxes that we collect, say from a consumer-based taxes or excise taxes, we also have to look at the revenue base or the tax base that we're looking at. The tax base for excise taxes or for corporate income taxes, personal income taxes is much greater than the tax base in the mining industry. So we can also look at it from that perspective.
I'm just saying, Mr. Speaker, to our good sponsor, na napakaliit nito sa kinukuha din na taxes sa mga mamayan, parang ganun, diba? Pero dapat nga dito tayo mas kukuha ng mas malaki na taxes, Mr. Speaker. Lalong-lalo na kung ang assumption natin, marami pang mineral reserves ang bansa. At, anong tawag dito? Totoo ba na marami pang mineral reserves ang ating bansa? With the intense, ang tawag ko po dito ay plunder, Mr. Speaker, no? Of foreign mining companies sa gold, copper, other minerals na meron tayo. Of course, gusto naman natin na, gusto naman natin na makakuha tayo ng tax mula sa mga malalaking kompanya na ito. Pero, igit sa lahat naman, Mr. Speaker, ang importante sa atin, hindi nasisira 'yung kalikasan at komunidad natin, Mr. Speaker. So, anyway, Mr. Speaker, yun lang, kinumpara ko lang, hindi naman siya apples-to-apples, pero worth comparing. Kasi kung ano'y nilalabas sa bulsa ng mamayan over dun sa kukunin mo na taxes mula sa mga big mining corporations, Mr. Speaker? Distinguished sponsor? Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, bagamat, tataas ba 'yung koleksyon ng gobyerno mula sa operasyon ng pagmimina?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Base po sa ating Pano Kala, yun po 'yung sinasabi nating magkakado ng kadagdagang 1.93 billion pesos na koleksyon ang ating gobyerno mula po sa mga mining operators dahil po sa Pano Kalang ito.
Anyway, Mr. Speaker, gusto ko lang sabihin na napakaliit talaga, no? From 3%, actually, we have a people's mining bill in which 10% sana ang gusto namin, no? Na royalty rate sa fiscal regime for mining. Pero here we are, speaking of, ilang percent lang?
Sa, magkakaiba po, para po sa, for mining operations operating within mineral reservations, our proposal is to get royalties of 3% of the gross output. For mining operations operating outside of mineral reservations, we impose a margin-based royalty on income ranging from 1% to 5%, depending on the margin. For small-scale mining operators, we propose to impose 1/10 of 1% of the gross output as royalties. And finally, we're also proposing to impose a windfall profit tax ranging between 1% to 10%, depending on the margins.
So, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, napakaliit pa rin noong 3% as gross, at napakaliit pa rin ng 1% to 5%, ano? Para sa ating palagay, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, dahil napakalaki noong makukuha sa atin, mula sa atin, ng ganito, no? Na set up, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Parang sa tingin natin talagang, dapat po, itaas naman natin 'yung nakukuha natin na revenues mula dito sa mga mining corporations na ito. But, sabi ko nga kanina, overall, hindi naman po talaga kami pumapayag kasi mas more extractive para sa atin. At sa tingin po natin, for decades and decades of mining operations sa ating bansa, siradin po talaga 'yung kalikasan natin. So ang gusto po sana natin ay, hindi rin tayo nag-a-agree totally dito, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Anyway, siguro yun po, kasi pag sinabi mong 3%, 'yung gross, oo, meron kang kikitain kanina mula sa royalties, 2.5, 1.1 fees para sa mga ano, LGUs, 5.7% 'yung sinabi po ninyo kanina. So ano 'yung balik sa kanya sa community? Kasi, 'yung mahalaga naman po dito, ano'y itsura ng community after, diba? So, ayun, Mr. Speaker, ginong sponsor?
Opo.
Ay, miss sponsor, sorry.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, just to respond to the comment a while ago that it seems to be too low. Currently, there are only 40 mines operating in the country. And that contribute a total of about 38, 39 billion pesos every year to national government revenues. On top of that, if we look at the average effective tax rate, if you add all of the different taxes currently being paid by the mining industry, income taxes, excise taxes, all the fees, all the royalties, that comes to about an effective tax rate of 48.98%. So, ganun po kalaki 'yung ibinibigay po ng mga mining companies bilang kontribusyon sa ating pong gobyerno. Doon po, sa pangalawang tanong ng ating distinguished interpreter. Pagdating po doon sa social, sa social and environmental expenditures ng mining companies, sa kasalukuyan po, marami pong iba't ibang mga programa na mandated by law, na kailangan pong i-undertake ang mga mining companies. Several of these, there are royalties paid to IP communities under the EITI, which is at least 1% of gross revenue. There is also the social development and management program, which is mandated to be 1.5% of the annual operating cost of the previous year. There's also the annual environmental and protection enhancement program based on prescribed formula. There's also a mine waste and tailings fee reserve fund that is imposed per ton of mine waste generated. And finally, for mining operations that approach the end of the life of mine, there's also a decommissioning program in which they're required to rehabilitate the area that was extracted. For example, po, for the year 2022, the social development and management programs added up to 2 billion pesos.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I'm sorry, pero nakapunta po ako sa isa sa mga lugar kung saan, matindi 'yung extractive mining sa Oshana Gold, ano? And I would like to tell you the conditions of the people there. 'Yung 5.7% po na sinasabi ninyo for LGUs, hindi naman po talaga 'yung napupunta dun. In fact, nakita ko po, kung paano 'yung mga lugar, wala ang hospital. Nilagay nila 'yung supposedly ay clinic dun sa taas ng malapit din sa mining, overlooking 'yung mining operations. But then, hirap po 'yung mga tao dun kasi kapag nagkakasakit sila because of the tailings, dahil sa mining, hindi rin naman sila makakatakbo agad-agad sa Nueva Vizcaya, sa centro, para makapagpagamot. Hindi po nagagamit 'yung mga tinayo, pero wala namang doktor, walang kahit ano, at wala lahat. Struktural lang siya, nabubulok siya dun. So 'yung kondisyon ang ganun, na 'yung balik sa community, kaya that is why sa IP community po dun, inireklamo nila at binarekadahan na nila 'yung Oshana Gold because of that. Pero kung sasabihin nyo sa amin na ganito kasi malaki 'yung binibigay niya para sa ano, eh, what about the people na nandun? Sila po 'yung apektado, sila 'yung nagkakasakit, sila din 'yung alam nila kung paano pangalagaan 'yung kalikasan dahil doon sila nakatira. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor? So, 'yung, 'yung hindi siya nag... So, 'yung, 'yung hindi siya, 'yung social cost, 'yung sinasabi niyo po, no, na okay lang yan, na malaki naman 'yung naibibigay natin sa gobyerno para dyan, pero 'yung mga tao doon sa, that is just one, ha? I'm just, nagbibigay lang po ako ng example ng isa sa mga napuntahan ko na lugar. Kung saan sinabi talaga nila, kung ano 'yung kondisyon nila, di pinakita nila 'yung kondisyon nila. Hindi naman nagko-comply, yun ang sabi nila. Hindi nagko-comply ang mga mining corporations doon sa pangangailangan ng mga communities. Tapos, you're saying about environmental protection, rehabilitation? That's not, that's not true. Kasi nga, nakita ko rin doon sa lugar kung paano 'yung leakage namumorblema sila doon sa tailings dahil hindi 'yan ma-manage-manage ngayon ng Oshana Gold, diba? Delikado po yun para sa mga mamamayan doon. Ganun pa rin, worst ang kondisyon, health, education. Sabi magpapatayo ng eskwelahan. Ang napatayo lang po ay mga, anong tawag doon? Poste ng mga grills lang po yun, poste at grills lang. Hindi pa umabot ng isang palapag, ganun ang itsura. So napakapatetic po, no, sa isang komunidad na ganun. Tapos, ang tindi nung mining extraction doon sa lugar nila. So sa tingin po natin, hindi pwedeng ganun, hindi pwedeng tagibang, no? 'Yung sinasabi na umuunlad tayo, kumuha tayo ng malaking revenues dito, pero 'yung balik nito sa mamamayan, nagkakasakit sila, wala palang hospital, wala palang eskwelahan, ganun 'yung kondisyon. And, eto pa, sinabi sa kanila sa community, huwag na kayong magreklamo. So ang nangyayari sa kanila, nagkakaroon pa ng hati sa community. Those who would agree with the mining corporations para payagan, payagan na magkaroon ng ano doon, ng mining corporation, versus doon sa mga tao na ayaw. So ngayon, ang nangyayari, pag ayaw mo, sasabihin sa'yo ng barangay, sasabihin sa'yo ng pulis, hindi ka pwede doon. So, naikwento ko lang, naikwento ko lang, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. The kind of life na meron kapag ka nandun sa Kasababa. So, hindi talaga siya pupwede na ganito, na 5% for LGUs? No, it is not enough, no? Para doon sa damage na nangyayari sa mga communities natin. Madam, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Siguro, as a last ano na lang, baka may isasagot ka?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, one of the thrusts of our current measure is to increase transparency and accountability on the part of mining companies as well as from the side of the communities. The transparency and accountability provision ensures that what are paid to the communities are properly appropriated and used. So yun po 'yung isa sa mga nais nating tutukan sa pamamagitan na ating panokala, na siguraduhin na una, 'yung mga mining companies ay ibinibigay 'yung natarapat para po sa mga komunidad at mga lokalidad. At pangalawa po, makita rin natin kung paano po ginagamit ng mga lokalidad at ng mga komunidad 'yung pondong na kanila pong nakukuha.
Thank you. Maganda pong panokala, pero 'yung pinaka-effect naman po 'yung aking gustong ipush, no? Na talagang gawa ng paraan ng gobyerno na ito. Kung transparency lang, for years and years, nandyan na sila. 'Yung mga mining, how old is the mining companies na meron dyan? Decades talaga, ano po, 'yung pinaka-matatanda o matatagal na, no? Anyway, as a final manifestation, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, under the guise of rationalizing the tax regime for the mining industry, the proposed bill will actually generate lower revenues due to lower royalty tax rate and unreasonably high threshold for the windfall profit tax rate. In any case, tax revenues from mining companies will never compensate for the long-term disastrous implications of large-scale foreign mining operations in the country. The supposed tax intake from the mining industry cannot also be a substitute for forgone mineral ores which are exported to other countries and which will never be taken back. This could have been utilized domestically for the rollout of national industrialization and the setup of medium to heavy industries. The said bill is part of the comprehensive tax reform package sponsored and supported by the International Monetary Fund, IMF, and World Bank, forming part of otherly grossly anti-people measures such as Train Package, Train Package 1 po, CREATE, and many other regressive tax measures. In the proper time, we will register our vote on the proposed measure. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat sa pagsagot sa mga tanong ko sa ating butihing sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much to the honorable Arlene Brosas for her interpolation.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8937.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended.
Speaker, we have additional reference of business for the day. I move that the secretary please read the title of the resolutions for first reading.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the resolutions for the referral to the appropriate committees.
Additional reference of business, resolutions. House Resolution 1269, directing the appropriate House committee to conduct an inquiry on numerous instances of unauthorized fund transfers arising from targeted bank-related scams and fraud, by Representative Tien.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1270, commending and honoring the Embassy of Japan in the Philippines for their generous and immediate provision of assistance for disaster response and resilience to the Philippines, by Representative Ecleyo.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Resolution 1271, commemorating the 76th anniversary of the diplomatic relations between the Philippines and Norway, by Representative Ecleyo.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Resolution 1272, congratulating and commending Filipino Representative Ethan Moses Gozun, who was awarded champion of the instrumentalist musician competition and garnered five gold medals in the World Championship of Performing Arts held last July 28, 2023 to August 6, 2023 in California, by Representative Kahayan Uy.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution 1273, congratulating Mr. John Lloyd Cruz for winning Best Actor in the Locarno Film Festival, by Representatives De Venesia, Coangelica Natasha, Legarda, and other members.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution 1274, expressing the deep condolences of the House on the passing of Mr. Pepito de Leon Albert, by Representatives De Venesia, Coangelica Natasha, Legarda, and other members.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1275, expressing the deep condolences of the House on the passing of Mr. Willie Wilson Nepomuceno, by Representatives De Venesia, Coangelica Natasha, Legarda, and other members.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1276, expressing the deep condolences of the House on the passing of Ms. Anna Maria Bambi L. Harper, by Representatives De Venesia, Coangelica Natasha, Legarda, and other members.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1277, expressing the deepest sympathy, solidarity, and support of the House of Representatives to the people and government of Morocco for the tragedy and devastation caused by the September 8, 2023 earthquake, by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Gonzalez Aurelio, Dalipe Libanan, Marcos Romualdes Yade Marie Enasidre.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under calendar of business for the day, I move that we take up House Bill Number 8969, and I would like to request the secretary to please read the title of...
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8969.
House Bill Number 8969, Anna creating a sustainable fiscal framework for the pension system of the military and uniform personnel, providing mechanisms for the disposition of government assets for the purpose and appropriating funds therefore.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Joel Sartes Alceda, Second District of Alabai, for his sponsorship speech.
Congressman Sartes Alceda is recognized for his sponsorship.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Today, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I am here to sponsor House Bill 8969 or the Military and Uniform Personnel Pension System Act. In his second State of the Nation address, President Marcos asked Congress for an MUP pension system that is fully functional and financially sustainable and that guarantees that no effects are felt by those in the uniform services. Your honors, the fiscal sustainability of the current MUP pension system has long been an outstanding issue. The annual appropriations allocated to the current MUP system have significantly increased over the years. Moreover, the pension system is indexed to salary of the active personnel contrary to common practice of using the highest salary as the basis for retirement or the GSIS's practice of using the average monthly salary received by a government employee during the last three years immediately preceding retirement. Indexation became more unsustainable, however, in 2018 when then-President Duterte approved an almost 89% increase in base salaries of active personnel, which doubled both MUP salaries and therefore, the pensions of retirees and their survivors. However, the impact of the automatic salary indexation was minimized for the starting in 2020 when since President Duterte Marcos had not increased MUP salaries, the average annual salary increase was reduced to a more sustainable 8% instead of the 12.7% from 1987 to 2020 and will improve to around 6% until the end of President Marcos' term of office. If consequently, the estimates of actuarial reserve deficiency of the MUP's MUP pension has actually declined. Initially, it was estimated at 6.97 trillion and in fact, using 10% per annum. And in fact, this could have risen to 14 billion trillion if we use 12% per annum. From 13 bills seeking reform, the MUP pension, this 19th Congress, the Ado Committee on the MUP Pension System has delivered a more robust MUP pension reform proposal through House Bill 8969 to ensure the strength of our country's fiscal health as well as the MUP pension system's sustainability. Just allow me to highlight the substantive reforms embodied in House Bill Number 8969. One, the salary increase of MUPs will be cap at 3% per annum for the next 10 years or guaranteed for the next 10 years. The mandatory retirement age was adjusted. There is a gradual shift to the contributory system to augment the funding sources of the MUP pension system for new entrants. Two separate trust funds should be established, the AFP Trust Fund and the Uniform Personnel Services Trust Fund. And number five, the MUP Trust Fund Committee will be created to manage the MUP trust funds with the Bureau of Treasury as the secretary at the committee and the GSIS as essentially the benefits administrator. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, we pushed for this pension reform in high regard of the services and sacrifices of our military and uniform personnel to our nation. Together, let us push for sustainable fiscal framework to ensure funding for the pension of our daily heroes. Just to summarize, Mr. Speaker, initially, the actuarial reserve deficiency was estimated at 9.7 trillion. And if you use 12%, this would have risen to 14 trillion. Through financial engineering, we were able to reduce, the current bill actually will reduce the actuarial reserve deficiency to only 3.4 trillion, which makes it more sustainable. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Raúl Buboy C. Tupas, Fifth District of Iloilo, for his sponsorship.
Representative Tupas is recognized.
Ramagsalamat po, Mr. Speaker. To our esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I rise today as one of the vice chair of the Ado Committee and as chairman of the Committee on National Defense to co-sponsor and support the passage of House Bill 8969, Anna creating a sustainable fiscal framework for the pension of the military and uniform personnel, providing mechanisms for the disposition of government assets for the purpose and appropriating funds therefore. The work of the Ado Committee on Military and Uniform Personnel System headed by our chairman Kong Joey Salseda, to say the least, is not that easy. As members of this committee, we continue to try and understand the delicate balance of established... the delicate balance of establishing fiscal stability on the pension system on the one hand and safeguarding the socioeconomic security of our MUPs on the other. Itong nakaraan pong mga araw at buwan, we have worked diligently to come up with a bill that is least disruptive, fair, and viable to pave the way for a sustainable pension system for our MUPs, our heroes and heroines. To this end, House Bill 8969 incorporated the following provisions. It sets the mandatory retirement age to 57 years old. It provides a fixed 3% annual increase in the base pay of MUPs for the next 10 years. It harmonizes the retirement and separation pay across all MUPs. It retains the granting of promotion to a one rank higher, to one rank higher of MUPs upon retirement. It creates two separate trust funds, namely, the Armed Forces of the Philippine Trust Fund and yung isa po ay ang Uniform Personnel Services Trust Fund. It also creates a special window under MUP trust funds for assistance to indigent MUP pensioners. It allows additional sources of funding, which includes, una po yung proceeds from lease, joint venture, auction, development rights, or disposition of government properties, and ang pangalawa, investment income from MUP trust fund. It also enmarks proceeds from the disposition of one MUP service to its personnel. And last but not least, it examines the MUP trust fund, its assets, revenues, including actuaries thereof and benefits paid from all taxes, assessments, fees, charges, or duties of all kinds. To further respond to the recommendations of our MUPs and protect the well-being of our pensioners, meron pong idadagdag na mga amendments later on. Again, let me assure our MUPs that we in Congress recognize the vital role that you perform in providing internal and external security, promoting peace and order, and ensuring public safety. Nagpapasalamat po kami sa inyong lahat for the courage and determination na inyo pong di ni display in the faithful performance of your duties. We also affirm our continued support to our defenders who risk life and limb para po sa ating bayan. We are proud of your accomplishments. And in passing this House bill, we trust that your sacrifices will not be left unrecognized long after you leave active service. The entire nation rallies behind you in the performance of your sworn duty. And the Filipino people are grateful for your bravery and sacrifice. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, this is a challenging time for all of us to work for the crafting of a sustainable pension system and establishing a fiscal framework that fully supports the funding requirements of our MUPs. Let us not fail our military and uniform personnel. We are appealing po sa lahat ng suporta at tulong para mapasa itong measure. Maraming salamat po at mabuhay ang sambyan ng Pilipino.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Don S. Fernandez of the Lone District of Santa Rosa City for his privileged speech.
Representative Don Fernandez is recognized.
Maraming maraming salamat, Majority Floor Leader. Mr. Speaker and distinguished colleagues, pleasant evening. It is my honor and privilege to co-sponsor Committee Report Number 728, submitted by the ADO Committee on Military and Uniform Personnel Pension System Act on House Bill Number 8969, entitled Anna Creating a Sustainable Fiscal Framework for the Pension System of the Military and Uniform Personnel, Providing Mechanisms for the Disposition of Government Assets for the Purpose and Appropriating, Appropriating Funds Therefore. At the onset, I wish to emphasize that this bill seeks to establish a viable funding source for the pension requirements of the MUPs, which stands at 158.4 billion pesos for fiscal year 2023. And is estimated to increase to 257 billion for fiscal year now, uh fiscal year 2024. It also seeks to ensure that the sustainability of the pension and other benefits of military and uniform personnel by creating a fiscal framework that fully supports its funding requirements. Some of the significant points or features of the bill, which include the following, among others, a fixed 3% annual increase in the base pay of active MUP for 10 years, sets the mandatory retirement age for 57 years old, harmonizes the retirement and separation pay across LMUP, mandates the Secretary of Finance to formulate policies ensuring that the fiscal sustainability of the pension of the MUP and the, and assess and control its risk to government fiscal position, retains the promotion of MUPs to one rank, rank higher upon retirement, and creates two separate trust fund, Armed Forces of the Philippine Trust Fund and also the UPS Trust Fund. Establish also the MUP Trust Fund Committee to be administered, uh, the MUP trust funds with the Secretary of Finance as chairperson, Bureau of Treasury as its secretariat, and the Government Services Insurance System as its fund manager. It also creates the special window under the MUP trust funds and allows the following additional sources of funding, yung proceeds po ng lease, joint, development, auction of development rights or disposition of government properties identified for the purpose and the investment income from the MUP trust fund. Uh, therefore, I earnestly appeal for the favorable consideration of this bill. Thank you, maraming maraming salamat. And I would like to take this opportunity to, uh, to thank also uh, our chairman of the committee on ADO, si Chairman Joey Salceda, for taking, taking the cudgel. And um, we know that you've been through a lot of, of voluminous and uh, uh, convoluted problem, no? But you were able to navigate the committee in a placid and peaceful way. And that's the reason why we salute you and keep it up. Hanggang mapaaproba natin to the Senado, we all know that this is a complex problem that entails the pension of our, our MUPs. Uh, but um, we need to follow the orders of the speaker. And in accordance with the tone of the president, um, I would like also to commend our president for, um, for taking the cudgel as well, no? Um, for so many years, since 2004, hindi po to na actionan. And a lot of president has passed by, but this time, it was able, uh, the president, um, uh, with his bravery, with his courageous action, uh, the gallantry and the fortitude, uh, belongs to him. Kaya mabuhay ka Pangulong Ferdinand Marcos and Speaker. Uh, sa iyong pronouncement that ang atin pong mga pensioner ay garantisadong may pension, uh, may seguridad sa tamang oras at sa tamang panahon, habang sila nabubuhay, may pension po ang atin mga MUPs. Maraming salamat at mabuhay po ang bansang Pilipinas.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to all three sponsors. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8969.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none, motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we take up House Resolution 1277 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said resolution.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution Number 1277.
House Resolution 1277, resolution expressing the deepest sympathy, solidarity, and support of the House of Representatives to the people and government of Morocco for the tragedy and devastation caused by the September 8, 2023 earthquake.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we adopt House Resolution 1277.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1277. All those in favor, please say aye. All those again say nay. The ayes have it, House Resolution Number 1277 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we adjourn session until 3 o'clock tomorrow, September 12, 2023. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Session is adjourned until tomorrow, September 12 at 3:00 p.m.